... eighteen and through the town website at www dot eastham dash ma dot gov. All right, any public information from the board? A little limited, we have one out sick and one on the road on his way here. Jerry, you want to call the...
Yes, I'd like to call the Finance Committee to order.
All right. Any information from the public of anything that's not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll go into, well, we can't do our public hearing yet because it's not five thirty-five. So, let's see, what can we take care of? How about committee appointments? Gary Senacall for the Recycling Committee. I hear you Gary along with two other people. It's feast or famine with that committee, so we have one spot open as an alternate. And I highly recommend him for that spot.
I'll make a motion to accept Gary Senacall onto the Recycling Committee.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Three to zero. All right, what else can we do? Talk about the, yeah. The cover photos for the annual report.
Yep.
I had a couple favorites.
I do want to see the last four years.
Yeah, Jackie had some samples of the last four years, just so we could see how they would maybe fit in and what we, you know, what we had for pictures before. Yeah, I like the lupine.
You like lupine, yeah.
And, or the scallops.
Yeah, those are my top two.
Amy, Amy, could you guys talk into the mics?
Oh, sorry, you can't.
I'm having a little difficulty over here.
Okay, sorry.
Because we're old.
No problem.
Thank you.
Have some cookie, those will...
Yeah.
Sugar will improve your hearing.
Does that help your ears?
Yes.
Do you want to approve the lupines?
I'll make a motion for the lovely lupines.
That's fine.
Second?
I like that. Oh, check.
All right, great. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Three to zero.
Two minutes.
Lovely Lupines was submitted by a member of our Tea Time Committee.
Oh, nice.
Lockhart.
Joan Lockhart, yeah.
Oh, fun.
She probably has some art hanging in here somewhere. She's quite artistic person. All right, we're not going to do the warrant for the fees now. How about minutes? We're knocking things off the end here.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from Monday, February twenty-fourth.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Three to zero. Uh-oh. Jerry, we can hear your cookie being unwrapped.
My cookie?
I know I told you to go ahead and eat them, but...
It's supposed to be good for his ears.
I turned off the mics, so now you can't.
Oh, God. All right, I think we can actually go to the Sam's Deli one since it was continued. We probably don't have to wait to the exact time. So, Susan?
Hi, everybody, how are you?
Great.
Okay, so after I left this last meeting, we had a few weeks ago, I did spend some time reviewing the tapes and making sure I understood the concerns that everybody had raised by both the committee and the community. And after review of the documentation, it's understandable that the board and the community was a little concerned about what appeared to be a significant departure from what Sam's Deli is and has always been. The sort of image of some high school students hanging out after school around a pile of vodka is not a pretty sight, and understandable. And of course, my intentions could not have been further from that, but I understand the need that at the end of the day, the vision and the documentation need to align, so that we're all make sure that we're all on the same page. So, I've taken some time and today we, I was, the basic request for today was that I come back with a review of the, review of the floor plan and to present a risk mitigation proposal, so that everybody understood what we're doing at Sam's to make sure that the community stays and our underage kids stay safe. So, and before moving into those areas, I just kind of want to make, take a quick moment to set the record straight on a couple things were a bit confusing last time. First of all, the communication, the public communication went out, said that I was changing the name of the store from Sam's Deli to Sam's Liquors. That was an error by the clerk, or I'm not sure who, somebody along the way misread that, and I'm not doing that. In fact, I've taken the whole naming out of it, just because it was really just for paper, paper trail sake, and really has no impact. Sam's Deli is going to be Sam's Deli, and it's never going to not be anything but Sam's Deli. Secondly, the floor plan was submitted, there was a little confusion around that, not once but twice. I had actually submitted two floor plans to the town prior to our meeting last week, but somehow it did not make it into the information packet that everybody had. So, I'm not sure quite how that happened, but I do want everybody to rest assured that I would not have submitted it without that. That was, that was a requirement of the submission, and that was there. And the last thing I kind of just want to touch on is, in the midst of sort of a lot of discussion a few weeks ago, I had sort of offered to take spirits out of Sam's. And after I went back and I analyzed the data, and I spoke to, most importantly, my manager of my, of the liquor store, Sean Donnelly, who managed Uncorked for me last year, we have decided to, for the customer satisfaction and convenience that we offer, that we have not eliminated that off the second application that we put in. But I did make some other revisions that I think are quite impactful, and I'm hoping that those will, I feel that those will address the concerns that the people and the community had going in. So, with that being said, I revised, I submitted a revised application about two to three weeks ago with the following alteration of premises, so it's not a change of use, it's an alteration of premises that was submitted. And while the license would expand to the building to allow customers to check out from any register, the space allocated to the display of beer, wines, and liquors would remain virtually unchanged. And that was actually my vision from the beginning, but I've actually incorporated that language directly into the liquor license application, so that the proposed description of premises would say, wood frame, single room, two-level unit of one oh six by twenty-five containing a street-level retail sales display area limited to twenty-three by twenty-five located at the east end of the building, which is essentially where it sits today. A new, larger register area would be relocated directly next to the door that enters into this area. And for those of you who have the floor plan, you can see that register area there, so right next to where consumers come in and out of that area by where the liquor and wine is, there will be a brand-new, spanking, large register area. The spirits would be located on the east side, close to the register, in a direct line of sight. We'd also be using a cooler to provide a quote-unquote "de facto" wall that would separate the deli and grocery area from the beer, wine, and spirits display area. And again, if you have the floor plan, you can see that it's a six-foot wide cooler, it's three feet deep, and if you envision, it basically leaves a few feet on either side for people to walk through. So, it basically creates a wall, so you can have vision to the back, but there is a de facto wall that would separate this, which is, I actually think, a better layout anyway for the whole space, it kind of keeps it separate.
How tall is it?
It's four, four feet high. And since this new register would be, area would be used for both beer, wine, and spirits, as well as grocery and deli products, we would discontinue the sales of NIPs in this format that we're talking about. You don't want to be checking out and getting your coffee with a case of NIP standing behind you. So, so in this format, we would discontinue the sale of NIPs. So, that's the change of the floor plan, and sort of hopefully essentially addresses some of the issues people had about thinking about, you know, beer, wine, and liquor being all over Sam's Deli. That's not what it would be, and that's certainly not what this liquor license would allow for. So, that's the first question. The second question, on the mitigation of underage, of managing the alcohol spirits license, it's a very serious responsibility. And first, I'd like to thank the Town of Eastham for entrusting us with this responsibility last year. We had no issues last year. In fact, the only person who showed up drunk was trying to buy food, not wine, girl last year. They came in twice. But, and I also, you know, one of the questions raised was, you know, what are the legal requirements about this? And, you know, it's really interesting, and because it, the legal requirements are really, it's really up to the responsibility of the owner. That is the legal requirement. They basically require you to take reasonable measures, what they call reasonable measures, to do that. And so, some, some take a conservative approach, which is basically anybody under thirty gets IDed, of course, anybody in the party gets IDed. And your role and responsibility in that is to prevent three things from happening: underage drinking, third-party purchasing, and selling to somebody who's already intoxicated. There is, although it's not legally mandated, both myself and the manager took the TIPS certification class. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with the TIPS certification. It stands for Training and Intervention Procedures for Servers of Alcohol. And it's a very, really good program. It's a four-hour online class. You're required to take an exam at the end. It does, shows videos of situations to help people understand. It shows how to recognize identifications that are false. And what we'll do this year is require anybody who's checking out anybody to be TIPS certified, so not just us, but all the managers in the building, plus anybody who would be checking anybody out, would be, would be required to be TIPS certified. And it does, the program not only does it help you understand, it gives people a lot of confidence and understanding of how important it is to be able to make sure you're preventing those three things from happening in your community. And I think that's all I have. Those were the plans and the proposals, and I guess I'll kick it back to you guys.
All right, well, thank you, Susan. I appreciate you, you know, taking another look at this and making some, you know, changes that were concerns to us, the NIPs, removing that. And I really like the idea of keeping it display in that area. You and I had talked about that after the meeting, and I think that's really key, because you're not expanding really anything. You're basically taking down a wall and then allowing the other registers to be used. But, you're doing the tips. And in looking at the plan, I think really your point that with the register turned around like that, you're going to have better visibility, and with the wall down, actually, so, so thank you.
Yeah, of course.
All right, any other comments, questions?
I guess I have a couple comments. I appreciate all the work that went into this, but I think for me, there are still some issues that don't get resolved with this kind of setup. One of the things that happens, I think, when you open up the floor plan, which is great, is you get to see, you know, over there, but so does everyone else, and it becomes a much more fluid space, so it's much more accessible to anyone that comes into Sam's Deli. I don't know any other liquor spaces in town like that right now. And as we know, you know, once you give permission for something, it's very difficult to remove that. Like, once it's done, it's done. And as you said, the Sam's Deli is going to be Sam's Deli while you own it. And that's problematic, because you could sell it next year. And I, you know, there are businesses that are coming into towns around us right now, Liquor &amp; More and other businesses, they're in Orleans, Enwell Fleet. An open-format floor plan would be ideal. And once that, those types of things happen, you can't move backwards. And I don't think, just being a conduit for what the town wants, I can't imagine that that's something our residents want, and nor would they like to see decisions that could lead to that sort of thing. And so, for that reason, and a few others, I'm really reluctant to still approve expansion in a space that serves liquor.
Can I just make a couple comments about your points? So, I think a new owner would require a new license. So, we could deny or put restrictions on anybody else that would, in the future, could buy this. So, it's not that they, the license would carry forward. It would be something new for the next person, just like it was new for Susan last year. And without doing anything, she still has the liquor license. It's just the wall issue really is the... Okay, I just wanted to...
And I actually think it helps improve visibility, because if you, if you're looking at trying to prevent third-party purchasing, right, which is a big issue, right, buying, buying beer, wine, liquor for somebody in a group of people, right now, when somebody goes in that liquor store, if they separate out, and one goes here and one goes there, you have zero visibility to it, zero. But with this wall being gone, as they congregate and talk, you can actually see if they're trying to do that kind of thing. And then you could start carting the whole group versus just the person who makes, makes the purchase of the alcohol.
Yeah, no, I definitely agree. It does make it more open and visible, but again, it also makes it more accessible. And like I said, there is no other space in town right now that serves liquor that provides that type of access to minors. I think it's the responsibility of the board to maintain a standard that people have been doing in this town for years.
So, it's a three-foot space. So, if you look at the floor plan, all right, you can see that the only opening that's changed, the only, from an access, to your point, like, you're concerned about access, the only access that's opening up is three feet there.
Yeah, but the visibility is changing.
Sorry?
The visibility is changing.
The visibility is changing, but the access is virtually unchanged. You can't still, can't access that space.
But...
Except going through the doorway, which you can do now.
Yes, but it's not visible, it's not in someone's face that there's liquor right there. They could just walk right over there, you know, an eighteen-year-old, a bunch of people that are down for the weekend with their frat. It's a different situation when they walk in to get sandwiches, and they're just seeing that, versus walking in and seeing this open format. They see, you know, it's, there's just nowhere else in town that's doing that. And I think the businesses in town that have operated with liquor have been really diligent and responsible over the years. And I think, I think it's a standard that's been set by other businesses in town, and this board should respect that.
Okay. Martin, did you have anything?
I had a couple questions. You said the, it's virtually unchanged, this place.
Correct.
What do you mean by virtually?
So, it comes out by about five feet, because the food is moving into the area. So, if you can see here, it goes from basically there to there, so it's like a five-foot shift because of where the coolers are located. So, it's virtually unchanged, but I didn't want to say exactly unchanged, because there is a couple feet swing there.
The other thing was, you said the, you would discontinue the sale of NIPs in this format. What do you mean by in this format?
Correct. Well, in this layout, the way it's, the way we are proposing it today, we would not be selling NIPs.
You wouldn't, okay.
Correct.
But my other question is, if we approved this, does that mean somebody, the whole floor plan, the whole Sam's Deli floor plan could be a liquor store if they, if somebody wanted to?
No, you can't, because you, it's actually written into the liquor license where the display, where the displayable space is, so it's, it's limited to that space.
Okay, so it doesn't allow that?
Correct, it does not allow that, right.
Okay, and Amy, what I was thinking, what you said, if a new owner came in, we'd have to change the floor space, which would be difficult.
How, well, how would we have to change it? It's, she's, she's asking to limit it to that twenty-three by twenty-five space that now has a wall separating.
Right.
It wouldn't have to limit anything. That's the way it is now. We could just say that that's what we'd approve.
Yes. We couldn't go backwards, that's what I'm saying.
Sure, we could. For a new, a new licensee, we could say we're not going to grant a liquor license, period.
It'd be difficult. I wouldn't have a reason for it.
Yeah, but there's no, there's nothing binding us to approve a new owner.
Okay.
Particularly if they want to change the license. Renewals are different, but a new owner is, is a whole new application.
So, the only change is really taking down the petition?
Exactly, just lowering the space.
Moving a couple of your display cases or whatever.
Exactly, that's exactly right.
And the register.
And getting people at the registers fully TIPS trained, correct, yep, throughout the building.
All right, Al, did you have any questions?
No.
All right, public hearing, so yes, members of the public, please come up, state your name.
Good evening, Sarah Wilcox, Eastham Superet. My only concern is, and it only just came to me, you can't sell alcohol until ten AM on Sunday, so how will they keep people from accessing the alcohol to that room? And that's just something that you...
Please. So, I did, I actually did go to several other businesses on Cape Cod, of course, not in Eastham, but on Cape Cod, who have this open-style floor plan and have everything, and talked to them about that very issue, because I was also wondering that, because now we kind of keep it locked, so now you have an open door. And basically, what they do is, first, they trust the cashiers, but beyond that, which is, you know, they have a coordinating off system, so that they cordon off that area when it's not, when you can't be selling it, when you can't be selling it, yeah.
How would you coordinate it off?
You have a coordinating system, you can buy them on...
Little stanchions with the ribbons.
The stanchions, exactly. I've already been pricing them, so I'm just waiting.
Well, and that, you know, makes me feel better, if it's limited to display in that area, it'd be easy to block off.
Of course, right, I mean, that...
They could still get to the cheese, right.
The whole thing, yeah, the whole thing would be blocked off, except for the register. Everything else would just be cordoned off when it's, when it's not operational. But, yeah, I thought about that, too, yeah.
All right, any, any more questions or comments from the public? All right, so we'll close the public hearing portion. Jamie?
I just, I do want to remind the board that this will change the standard in town. And, you know, yes, you can go backwards on how you do a license with a new owner and things like that, but likely, it's been said, you have to leave Eastham to see these type of formats. This isn't the standard in this town. So, to vote in favor of this is completely changing it, and there's not going backwards from there.
It is change of use, you're correct.
Yeah.
Right, we're not going to make them put the wall back up if it doesn't work out, so. All right. Any other comments? All right, anyone care to make a motion? Al?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain.
You're gonna abstain?
Yep.
All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the change of use for Sam's, I guess Uncorked really, and Sam's Deli.
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstain? So, two, one, one. So, that passes. All right, it's your...
Doesn't it need a majority?
It is, two to one. He abstained, so it's...
Okay.
The only thing you look at when there's an...
It's not a board, so even though Jared's not here, it's the majority of who is at the majority.
Right, majority of voting.
Who's...
He abstained, so it's really three people voting.
Okay.
Two to one, so.
So, you can, that is a legal vote? I just want to make sure, actually, no?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so next, we have a new beer and wine license application for Sabasco LLC, DBA Basco Grill, and I have a public hearing thing I have to read here. Town of Eastham will hold a public hearing at five thirty-five PM on Monday, March second, 2020, in the Greg Turner Meeting Room at the Eastham Public Library, 190 Sammasett Road, Eastham, Massachusetts, zero-two-six-four-two, on the new common victular license and beer and wine and malt on-premises license of, is it Sabasco or Sab... Sabco, Sabco. Sabco LLC, DBA Basco Grill, located at four-two-zero-five State Highway, units one and two in Eastham, Massachusetts. So, Natasha Crum, you want to come up and give us your ideas? And what, what this is going to look like?
So, this is where the box lunch used to be, the bio-bail lunch after that. So, basically, it's going to be the same counters, counter serve. Probably going to be serving burgers, seafood, hot sandwiches. I'm not going to do breakfast, I'm going to do lunch and dinner, so open from eleven till eight o'clock at night, and year-round, I'm looking for year-round also, because there's not much lunch places open year-round in Eastham, so I figure one should be good. I'm not looking to do, like, cold-cut sandwiches or anything, because there's already places for that. And I'm looking for the beer and wine license, just because a beer is good with a burger, so.
So, I sent you some sort of preliminary questions. So, as you see, we've been having discussions on other places with alcohol and things like that, and just curious how, you know, for lunch and dinner, will it just be counter service?
Well, there is some, there's twenty-two seats.
Okay, I have to say, I bet, I was in there years ago once.
Yeah, well, it was always, it was always some tables in there, I guess, because that's some tables rather when I moved in. So, there's twenty-two seats, and so it will be most, I'm sure, a lot of takeout more than, but I'm making the inside nice enough, I think, so people can stay in, instead of going and eating in the car, they can stay inside and eat.
How would the alcohol be served? Do we have, like, on tap, or...
No, it will be a bottle or a can.
Bottle or can. And with, I think with onsite, you have to, like, open it for them, right? Is that, I've never been involved in one of the, those types of licenses.
I'd like to hear how she's planning it.
Yeah, no, I, and I'm...
Not, that's, yeah, you...
I guess I'm asking what, how it would be served, and that's the cans and bottles, but...
Well, we open it, and we give it to the customer, and they'll bring it to the table.
Okay.
Or we, or we can bring it to the table, depending on how, if they have too many things to carry, I mean, we can, you know, we'll be helping if needed.
Okay, okay. And then how about takeout? What's the...
Well, takeout's just food, yeah.
Just food?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, okay, right, because you're on premises.
And beverages, like water or whatever they, but no, no alcohol.
Okay. All right, anyone else from the board have questions?
Do you have, how about outside tables?
Right.
Can they take beer and wine out there?
No.
Okay.
On the inside, on the inside.
On the inside.
How do you stop that?
By watching, by making sure that, first of all, we need to let know the customer, that we need to ask them, are you going to be eating inside, or are you going to be eating outside? And if they take some beer or wine, say, well, we have to stay inside, and if they want to go outside, we say, then we cannot serve it to you.
Yeah, is there signage that has to go with that? I'm not sure. I'm asking, like, no alcohol beyond this point and all that stuff? Is that another control?
I would, I would, yeah, I don't, I don't really, I'm not familiar with the controls on a restaurant, how they keep the alcohol inside. It's something we can...
Well, usually in a restaurant... Yeah, I mean, signing, we can put sign, like, where will be the fridge, where the beer or wine will be. We can put a sign inside only, or we can let, put a sign in front of the cash register with our order, alcohol needs to stay inside the building.
Okay. Jamie?
So, you know, I just want to reiterate again, liquor licenses are very easy to distribute by this board and very hard to revoke. So, when you're making a decision about approving one, I think it's important to be very diligent about that process, and for the person that's applying, to also be very diligent about their presentation on what their business is going to entail, how the alcohol's going to be served, how it's going to be balanced out with food and things like that. So, I'm going to ask a few questions about that.
Yeah.
All right. So, you had said that you're probably going to be serving burgers and things like that. So, when it comes to a liquor license, I think it's critical to know exactly what food's going to be served at lunch, exactly what food's going to be served at dinner, so you know what people are consuming when they're drinking. So, for me, I would really prefer to see a menu, or some, or a tentative menu, so I know what food is going to be served along with the alcohol. Additionally, I'd like to know exactly how the alcohol is going to be served, you know, you said you just open it and give it to them, like, are you going to be putting it in a paper cup, or are you going to be putting it in a glass? Are you going to be, you know, these types of things can make it a lot harder to leave the premise with the beverage. If beer's in a glass, it's a lot harder to sneak it out the door than if it's just in a can. Anyone can slip a can in their pocket.
Right.
I see it happen all the time on different businesses in the Cape. And so, since I'm on this board, I'm going to make sure that doesn't happen in Eastham if I can. It's not safe. So, I guess I'd want to know the answers to that, too, before I could approve another liquor license. Also, with takeout, if you're predicting primarily takeout, which you said, there's a concern of people sitting, having a few drinks, and leaving, and not having any food at all. So that is something to also consider in a primarily takeout setting when you're approving liquor license. And so for all these reasons, I think I need more information before I can approve another liquor license in town. Not because I wanna be anti-business, but because I wanna make sure this is safe. It's a controlled substance.
Okay, so there's no bar or place really where you can, while you wait for your food, have a beer? You either sit or get your food. You will not, I'm not sure, like in all, all of the other restaurants, when you go and do takeout, rarely people actually go and drink while they wait. And if they do...
It does happen in town.
Well, if they do, then maybe you can offer something to eat while they wait, or you can just like give something for free to eat. Like, like a lot of places can give like chips and salsa or something like that, so they'll drink and, and don't eat at the same time. Usually if you have free food, basically, if people decide to have a beer, they always eat something. So they're not gonna not eat if, if that's, if that's, that happened. Now, what else would you ask me?
Menu. Menu items?
The menu, the menu is being printed. I just came back from the place. So like I was saying, it's gonna be specialty burgers. It's gonna be like eight, 10 different burgers or specialties. It's gonna be the same thing with sandwiches, chicken grill or fried chicken sandwiches. It's gonna be some appetizers like chicken wings and onion rings and classic appetizers. And it's gonna be some soups also, homemade soups. And it's gonna be hot sandwiches. Rose B for, but hot sandwiches, nothing cold. Then it will be, I'm gonna try also to do for the dinnertime or for even some lunchtime, so do some dinner to go. So for when you work and you don't have time to go shopping or something, you just grab, I don't know, maybe like a pot roast or lasagna or pot roast, or I don't know, something to, for your house. And, or if you wanna stay in the restaurant, you can also do that. And for the beer, I agree with you, bottle is better than cans, I agree. So I probably will go for bottles, because I think it's better anyway.
Ed said to pour it, and I was saying that if you pour that alcohol into a glass.
Okay.
That...
That's possible too, that's fine.
I guess I, I would just maybe wanna see some type of business plan that kinda lays this out before I could approve something. I just... I just feel like it's, you know, I appreciate, you know, that you're answering these questions here, but it, it feels like, you know... I'm reluctant to approve another liquor license in this town and come back to another meeting to find out that half of what was said didn't happen. I'm sorry.
I apologize, but I still believe that I don't see a problem if you really are behind what you're doing and if you really like pay attention on what you serve to people, which is the job, our job, is to pay attention to what we do. Then I don't see a problem giving a beer or a glass of wine to somebody who wants to eat inside. And I don't see a problem there.
All right, anyone else from the board have any questions? All right, so this is a public hearing, so anyone from the public have any comments or questions for the applicant?
I'm Robyn Rowe from the Eastham Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here just to support any new business that's coming to town. We support Basco Grill, and we just wanted to go on record for that.
My name is Darren Crum, I'm her landlord.
And? Full disclosure.
Full disclosure. And just in reference to what the board has said, several times we mentioned a liquor license. This is not a liquor license. This is a malt beverage license for on premises.
Beer and wine, yeah.
Beer and wine. It's not liquor. I just wanted to make sure that we're not confusing the issue. Natasha, I know, I've known for 30 years? 25 years? We've been married 25. She takes her job very seriously. Again, I understand your concerns, but we're talking about, if somebody's doing their job properly, she knows how to do her job. We're talking about somebody being able to buy a beer with their lunch or wine with their lunch. I hate to say it's simple, but it's pretty simple.
You didn't wear quiet shoes, did you?
No, I didn't, no. Sarah Wilcox again, and I support Natasha wholly just because she's a wonderful cook. I've eaten some of her food. And you go, girl. And also Darren will be part of the situation, and I worked with him, he's a very serious fellow. I think they'll do a good job.
All right, anyone else from the public? All right, so we'll close the public hearing portion of this. Jamie?
Yeah, it's not that, I just wanted to clarify. It's not that I am opposed to issuing a beer and wine license, it's that I think it's the responsibility of this board to set a precedence for someone who's applying for it. And potentially, we bring this to a next meeting and we actually have a proposal, a business proposal, that lays out how liquor will be served, what the menu's going to be. So we have some kind of structure to this liquor license to set a standard for not only this one, but also for not liquor, sorry, beer and wine license, but to set a standard for not just this one, but future also.
Okay, how about, how about I throw this out? It's, it's for two things here, the common victular license and then the beer and wine malt on premises. So we could approve the common victular license for the restaurant. And then continue the beer, wine, malt portion if you want and get the other information that we're requesting. And, and move forward, that way you could move things forward to a point. And, but we can continue it to next week if that would work for you. I think we're meeting every Monday this month, so...
I think that would be helpful, just to, you know, set some framework and guidelines around these types of things.
Okay. And we'll, we'll talk in the meantime. I did send you that, that information of some of the things that I, you know, felt we'd be, we'd be asking you tonight. But we, we can talk more in the next week and, and make sure that, you know, you have everything that we're looking for, okay? So Jamie, do you wanna go ahead with the common victular license? That way she knows her...
I'll make a motion to approve the common victular license.
Second.
All right, any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Four to zero. And then I need a motion to continue the beer, wine and malt on premises license.
I'll make a motion to continue that.
To, let's see, that's this ninth, March 9th at 5:30.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Four to zero. So next Monday, we'll have you back with some other things. Great, thank you. Yeah, I did send you those, so... All right. Where are we? All right, Nauset Regional School and Elementary, Eastham Elementary School budgets. Tom Conrad, Giovanna Vendetti, and Bill Crosby from the elementary school. Tom, do you have a PowerPoint already? Oh, you do, okay. All right.
Oh, it's gonna be Co's.
Ooh, I'm moving up. Short extension cord.
Hi there, how are you? Good thanks, how are you?
We have a record. Thank you, Tom. Yeah, and I mean, the point doesn't just stop happening, it's just, you know... Wow, this is exciting.
Are you out of the gender too?
No, I'm not out of the gender.
Is this the elementary, no, this is the, what is this? It's a whole school, this is elementary school. Oh, they're both... Robin?
What you get for being at the middle line.
Oh, gosh. Whenever you're ready. I know, every time I lean on it. She's new.
That's what you get for sitting next to me.
Nope, she's new.
Just put a representative from the chamber. Take it easy.
Robin, Robin?
Robin, representative from the chamber.
That's our audience, the newspapers.
All right, who's first? All right.
So first of all, thank you for having us here to discuss the operating budgets of our elementary school and our region schools. We're gonna try something a little bit different tonight. We've been concerned about the amount of paper that we have to lose in trying to keep everyone on the same page. And this packet here represents our old style of doing things. We've brought packets for everyone, so that you could take those with you. But we're trying to stay within the confines of this PowerPoint. And the only two paper documents that we'll eventually introduce into this will be your pink copy and your yellow copy at some point, really at the end of the discussion about that particular school's budget. We also have up on the screen, we had received from the boards some questions relative to specific items that you wanted us to speak to. And so we're going to work our way down through those questions. Thank you for the questions. And we are going to stop the presentation with answering those questions. And obviously, we will go one question at a time, and we'll see where it takes us. All right, so thank you very, very much. So we have question number one here. What are your plans relative to funding the open liability question? Whether funding the areas of funding coming and so forth and so forth. And Giovanna will take this one on for us.
Thank you. Did you maybe recall last year was the first year...
Can you speak closer to the mic here? Thanks, Giovanna, thank you.
Thank you. Last year was the first year where the school committee adopted an OPEB policy to have the, the OPEB fully funded. And the plan was to ask the towns for $400,000, which we did last year, was a separately stated item similar to the capital on the operating budget for the region. And then $50,000 came out of the region-only budget. This year, we're doing something different. We're including all of it in the region-only budget. So there's $450,000 in the region-only budget. And you can look at the packet of the region-only budget once you get it later on in the evening. So that is the, the plan. Previously, we were putting 1% of the health insurance costs in the OPEB, but that wasn't enough. That was anywhere between $45,000 and $50,000 a year. So this is a more robust plan. And this plan was needed because of the renovation project of the high school. As Jackie knows, bonding percentage rates are based on this, they look at this, what plan you have for OPEB. And so this was adopted last year by the subcommittee, the budget finance subcommittee, as well as the full regional school committee.
Question.
Just a thank you for, for doing this. I know we caused some consternation last year, but I, I commend you for doing this. Thank you.
Okay, this is getting involved with estimated the transportation savings by the purchase of the propane buses and so forth. Giovanna will get into the numbers for us. One of the pieces that I wanna remind the two boards, the major initiative of us making this move was that when I first came on as your superintendent, we were facing a transportation contract with First Student that over three years went up 41%. 41%. And so you have to figure in, as Giovanna gets into it for us, that we no longer have any escalators like that at all. So Giovanna, go ahead.
So we are currently in year two of the contract of the collaboration with Cape Collaborative. So in the initial year, the, the savings approximated about $200,000. We don't have a calculation for field trips because that's separate and apart from the overall transportation piece, but we had anticipated there would probably be about $50,000 in savings on the field trip alone. In year two, district-wide, we're anticipating saving almost $85,000. In year one, Eastham Elementary School saved $18,479. And in this fiscal year, we're looking at a savings of $23,079. So for the year three, we have budgeted an nominal increase of about 3% based on the current year costs. We'll have robust savings once the leases on the buses end, and that would be at the end of year seven. Leases off for seven years, and we anticipate robust savings at that point. Because then we own the buses outright, and then we'll just start replacing as needed.
Okay. Quick question. You mentioned, I remember when this all came up about purchasing the buses, releasing them, I guess, to own. That your, your hope was that other people would rent them out to, to use for certain things or contract them out? Has much of that happened? Or is it mostly just direct transportation for the students and, and field trips?
So, thank you, Amy, because that is our goal still. It's taken quite a bit of discussions with the collaborative because they're not used to that sort of concept. And early on, I'll be honest with you, the first year was frustrating in the sense of it didn't seem that complicated to us at all. And so we have used them on a couple of the major events in some of the towns. And, and we're pushing really hard. For instance, we just looked into the Firebirds representing that, that sort of travel, things like this. And so each contract that we're looking at in terms of the potential of being a participant in that is ongoing. But there's no question the collaborative has had a little bit of a struggle with our initiative with this, and we seem to be starting to make some headway with that. We also, and I would like to say that we, we went into this in terms of knowing that at times, the community has the right to use these buses if need be. So if we had an event happening, a crisis of some nature, obviously the town can, can ask to have these buses be at certain locations, and we would do everything we could to make that happen. So we're pleased with the general piece. I'll give you one more concern of ours. Monomoy was picked up in the system this year. They came in behind us. And finding bus drivers is very, very challenging. And so we've asked and to put the brakes on this. And quite honestly, the issue was that we went into this with a full-time dispatcher. That trailer that's off of our office there and near the fields is where they operate out of. Because we wanted to respond very quickly to a complaint or an issue that a parent was having relative to transportation. What happened when Monomoy opened up was that they were short drivers. And this person that we had, was a licensed driver and was called in to drive on, on many days of the fall. And we certainly recognized the need to help Monomoy in terms of that driving situation, but it also had some effect on our operation. I will say, though, that the collaborative was great in negotiating with us, that we weren't going to be paying for, for this person to be driving from Monomoy and made adjustments to that, that salary line for us. So the good news is, it's, it's on hold at this point. No one else in Cape can come into this arrangement until we figure out the issue relative to recruiting more drivers.
Got a couple of questions on that slide. So can you use the mic? The savings are compared to the year before year one? All those saves, is that how you calculate?
The $200,000?
And the, and the year two is compared to year zero?
It would be compared to the previous year.
Compared to the 200...
Yeah, so in year two, we, the savings weren't as high as what we anticipated in year one, so they're slightly lower. As the superintendent indicated, you know, we did get a credit for the Linda Reyno, whereby she is also working on... the amount of time that she's spending on Monomoy as opposed to the region.
I didn't hear everything, Giovanna. Could you? Year two is a savings above year one or a savings above year zero?
No, it's above year one.
So...
So, year one was the first year of it.
Yes, year one, we saved $200,000, and in year two, we saved $84,000 above year one. So, that versus year zero, in year two, we saved $284,000, basically. That's excellent.
Is that correct?
Is that correct?
Yeah. So, the other point I want to make, Jerry, is that we haven't pulled together a report on the field trips. And that was, I can tell you that Bill told me that with First Student as our driver, he had a small group of kids go from his school to the Council on Aging, and that was a $250 bill. And so, basically, when we're looking at our numbers, we're looking at the cost per mile to run the bus and the driver's wage. And so, you can see, it can't get any better really in this game. And so, the field trips have, and when we do that number, it'll be impressive because we were paying so much for private.
Right. And these numbers are sans field trips. This is just transportation of children from their home to the school and back home.
Yeah. Yes.
I have a question. You've mentioned that you have a problem getting bus drivers. How are you able to say that you would be able to supply buses for things for the town and for other special occasions if you can't get bus drivers for regular activities?
So, our fleet of drivers has been very consistent, so we haven't had trouble with the drivers. It's some of the other communities that use this service that have had trouble. In this case, when Monomoy came on, they had to find a fleet, you know, a number of drivers for their fleet. And that wasn't as easy as it had been in the past. So, our NOSIT drivers have been very consistent, and we're very proud of the retention of all our drivers. And so, we at NOSIT haven't had a problem.
Oh, okay.
One of our dispatcher had to go over to Monomoy to help drive because she had a license. So, it's been, and the extra time actually is good because our drivers, in some cases, want to make some additional money by making runs on Saturday at an event that's happening in the town and things like that.
That was kind of my question. Thank you.
That was kind of the question I was going to ask, actually. So, thank you for asking that. And the other one was the drivers. So, have you, are there new drivers now than what historically it had been? These are all new drivers that come along with this new program? Is that correct?
So, in our case, Jamie, when, many of the drivers, of course, were driving for First Student, for-profit company. And then, when we made the switch, we had meetings with them, and I think 95% of them came over to our system.
Okay.
Yeah. They left First Student to drive.
So, the students didn't have to get introduced to new drivers? For the most part, it was people that they've already interacted with?
That's right.
Because I was going to ask how the students were doing with the new drivers.
Almost flawlessly, with very little change. The other piece, I would say, that anybody's watching this, that the collaborative has a, they have a $1,000 signing bonus if you were to come in. They would take care of your training, which is extensive. And if you stay into the next year and for your second year, you'll get another $1,000 bonus. So...
I happen to have my Class B with passenger endorsements.
So, let's sign you up right now.
Sign her up.
She's pretty responsible.
No accidents. No speed. I don't speed. If you, anybody can attest, if they've been behind me, they know that. They're not happy usually.
The buses would show up with some extra stickers.
Okay. Question three. What is the status of the program to attract foreign exchange students and to NOSIT Regional High School?
So, for some of the people in the room, they know that we were very, very active in having international students coming into our school. Some of it was driven by the desire to have more diversity of the student body. And then, we were looking at a certain tuition rate for these students to come to our high school. And it provided an opportunity for families to have an exchange student in their home. And in that program, they were receiving $1,000 a month, in some cases, from the agency that we used. We used an agency. We were probably one of the first of five in the state of Massachusetts to move forward with this a number of years ago. And quite honestly, as other school districts were looking at the NOSITS of Massachusetts, they thought this too was a good idea. And eventually, the company we were using was overwhelmed by the requests by almost 200 schools in Massachusetts who wanted to do this. And I knew this when I went to a national conference, and I saw our rep on the floor of a national conference recruiting, and I thought, we're just not going to get consistent numbers this way going forward. So, our new principal of his second year, Chris Elsasa, Dr. Elsasa, is off to a great start for us, and he comes from a private school background. And so, what has happened is that instead of depending upon agencies, we're using his contacts to create agents. This is exactly how the private schools do this. They have agents in the country. They are working directly for us going forward. And part of their work would be to recruit students that we would want to consider for the possibility of arranging for them to come to our high school. And you can see here, I'm identifying six countries that we're now in the works looking at: Italy, Germany, France, China, Cambodia, and Brazil. And obviously, we're cautiously watching. Thankfully, we don't have some students from some of those countries right now.
Yeah.
And so, we are moving forward with our agents now beginning to set up the opportunity next fall to begin to recruit these students coming into NOSIT Regional High School in a very similar program. The model is different. I'll give you an interesting piece of this program. Public schools are only allowed to bring in a foreign student for educational purposes for one year. And private schools have the right by law to bring them in for four years. And it's some question of us of why would that be? And, but it's at the federal level, and we really don't have any control to change that, quite honestly, at this point. Any questions?
I have a question. How are those agents paid?
So, they would be, it would be a fee that the student who was coming to us would be picking up to pay for.
Is that frequently by the country itself or the family?
Wherever they come from. Brazil would more than likely be from the government, but a number of the other companies, Cambodia could quite possibly be in that same situation. The other four, it would be from the family.
So, it's not costing you anything?
No.
What are the issues associated with immigration, visas, green cards, or whatever these students need to come into the country? Based on the fact that this has all been cut back now, is it still feasible?
Yeah. So, what happens is that, you know, we went through a process. We actually off, we, once we got into the program, we were vetted by both the federal government and the state in terms of actually being a school. It was quite interesting. They visited the school, and our rep is out of Boston for the federal government in terms of our licenses. But we are able to offer basically a visa for them to come in for one year's time to study at our school. And we fill out certain paperwork, and it goes through the process, and eventually gets to the student and his family. And in this case, our agent would take care of the, making sure it was done right on that end of it. So, it has nothing to do with anything relative to working in this country or anything else. It is purely for that one year of education.
Very good.
Okay. So, one of the benefits in educating our children from school choice, this is a school, what we know is a school choice question. This is one of the questions we hear wherever we go relative to the building project. Okay? So, let's talk about this. This is going to be a little bit long. I appreciate it, but I want to hit some of the points and go from there. How did we get into the school choice question? I think that's at the very beginning of this, and it started with Ed Reform. Many of you might remember that Ed Reform had drastic changes to how we moved forward with education in the state of Massachusetts. It also was in favor of seeing choice opportunities for kids across the whole Commonwealth. And at that point, began to see charter schools being part of the formula of options for children going forward. The other piece of it was, once, if you remember back, I had just come into the district 20-plus years ago now, that we actually saw a charter school, a Lighthouse Charter School, come into Orleans. It was located at the underground, I know it is the Underground Mall. And that eventually was a real issue. At that time, Micro Dome was our superintendent. And it was a lot of pressure on the entire system because, obviously, in that case, we were losing students and in theory, potentially, money. At the same time that it was going on, there was a situation going at the middle school. So, we got the charter school opening up. A number of our families were founders of that. It was an interesting time, to say the least. And we were seeing a number of students in our middle school leaving the district and going to charter under the choice program. So, we were really bleeding in two ways in terms of the loss of students to the brand-new Lighthouse Charter School and kids going around to the choice program in charter. And so, right away, the focus was on how do we stop this bleeding and what are we doing going forward? Now, the one good news in this story is that many of the kids who were going to the middle school in charter were then coming back to regional high school, our high school. So, the idea was, going forward, we began to look at choice. And I can tell you, because I can remember it vividly, that the first year to try and stop this bleeding was to have four seats at the high school for choice. That's where we started. And the thinking was that we would have one student at each grade under the choice program. Then, it was $5,000 as used today. And we would bring four more students in, and we would have $20,000 to use as we chose to spend for the program. And with four students coming, there was no cost to the district. Right? We didn't have to buy new textbooks. We didn't have to buy furniture. We didn't have to spend anything. Matter of fact, for your benefit, Wellfleet has, Wellfleet's our smallest elementary school, and they have now jumped into choice as of last year. Truro has choice. Provincetown has choice. And Wellfleet took the step to try and attract two students. They voted to have two students with that same exact concept. And although none of our schools have voted, everyone in the state of Massachusetts must identify each year what they're doing with the choice question. In this case, I can tell you that Wellfleet is considering now going to four students. And for a school like Wellfleet, four students, no expenses, helps quite a bit. Well, back to the NOSIT story. So, you can imagine what happens next, of course, as we go from four to eight, and we begin growing with some choice. And for a number of years, it wasn't a huge issue in terms of how many students can we bring in because maybe some of our graduates remember on the board that eventually, the high school grew to 1,200 students at one time in the district. When I came to NOSIT a number of years ago, it was a little over 600 students. And during that time, we were expanding the program because we eventually got to 1,200 NOSIT students. But as it began coming back down, there was more focus on how do we keep our programs and how do we use school choice to supplement that going forward? So, the first piece in terms of understanding it is that there are students in NOSIT Regional High School or NOSIT Regional Middle School that in theory cost us, there's no cost to it. But when we begin looking at the total number of students that are involved in the program, of course, there's some cost to it. And we have not ever broken out in terms of the data, or it would take a great deal of effort to understand how many students would, in this program, be considered literally not costing us any money? And where at that point, at what number, does it then carry a cost going forward? Right? So, that's the short answer of how we got into it, where it has evolved, and why it evolved. And going forward for us, we began looking at how do we sustain a student population of 900 to about 1,000 students? We think that that's a robust number from a program standpoint for the opportunity to have lots of choices for the students who attend that. And we saw that it was a great benefit for our students, our students being the region students, to, with the addition of these choice students, continue that robust program going forward. Because, as you well know, sitting here, that there is, choice is offered at every high school on Cape Cod. And I can tell you, neighboring district, I was just watching the news, and then, I'm not even sure what channel I was on, and I saw a TV commercial by one of the high schools. That doesn't come free. And NOSIT has not participated in radio ads, but when that first started, probably 12 years or more, I actually went to a presentation on it just to understand it. And at that time, it was $10,000 for 30-second pieces on the radio. And the issue is twofold. To try and keep our robust program intact that challenges all our students, and also have a robust program that keeps our kids home. Because as I think you all know, every NOSIT student has the same opportunity as other students across the Cape to choose to leave NOSIT and go someplace else. And that's the short end of that question. And I can tell you that, for instance, in the Lighthouse Charter School, and we've worked well with the Lighthouse Charter School, we always saw them when they came to NOSIT as NOSIT students. We never got drawn into drawing conclusions about who was better or any of that other stuff. There are kids who go to NOSIT, and they have a right to get the best education they can. And the issue going forward is that we have, for instance, we have around 58 students who go to the Lighthouse Charter School still as their program. And once you leave your school, it's really hard to get back to that system. And so, one would think they would go charter school in the middle school and charter school in the high school, which would be Sturgis. And I'm pleased to tell you that number drops. We believe that number's going to drop to only 12 students out. Once the high school decision is made, they're coming back, and it has savings of just under $25,000 for each student that comes back from the possibility of going to Sturgis, back to NOSIT. And I think for us, the revenue that we bring in, $1.6 billion, sometimes people want to say, so what are you specifically spending that on? And it's anything that costs money in terms of trying to bring the cost of the request of the budgets down for the taxpayers in our four towns. And that's where we stand. So... So, questions on that?
Are you going to go into the second question later?
You know, the question is, you're looking to see exactly what it costs each of the taxpayers?
Yeah. Yeah. One of the reasons we asked this, the finance committee asked this question, as we look forward, not just this budget, but we look at buildings, building a new school, and all the arguments we start to see with people using average costs, with 20,000 versus 5,000. So, you're costing you $15,000 a student. They ignore, I mean, the easiest fact is, whatever size school is, you need a principal. So, I mean, you're not going to get rid of that, you're not going to eliminate a certain amount. So, it would help us, because we're going to have to, I think, all the towns, to know what the incremental cost is. I mean, initially, as you started, as you explained it, it was filling an empty seat. So, there's virtually no incremental cost to having me show up at Nauset Regional High School. And when you get to around 25%, you know that there is some additional cost. So, if we can, in order to argue against people talking about average costs, which looks, from a financial standpoint, horrible, we need to know what the incremental cost is. Now, it may, and one of the, look, you're stuck, we're all stuck. With, we have to spend $25,000 for a student to go to Sturgis, somebody from Sandwich coming in pays only $5,000. And those are numbers that we have to deal with. And the fact, and the school building has also caused a spotlight in that these choice students don't pay for the fiscal plant. And that, when you're looking at 94, 97 million, whatever the final number comes out to, the town's, for 900 students, you know, about $100,000 a student, that is something that raises angst within the citizen's tax base. And we have to have answers to go back. Without the incremental costs, it's difficult for us to make that argument. We're starting to think about different things of, look, we need a new high school, don't worry about school choice now, we got, we can't, shouldn't make a decision now, we don't have the numbers, let's get the numbers. And don't worry about four years from now, having an albatross, if everybody says, get rid of school choice, because we can then take a look at, what do we do with middle school students and so forth, and switch them, because we have a brand-new facility. So, to try and push that question off. But the only reason, only way we could push it off legitimately is to get the incremental costs, so I can, I can make the argument. I can only say, average costs, don't take into account the fixed costs and so forth, but I don't have the arrows in my quiver to fight, to explain that in a town meeting.
So, I'll go back, and I'll look at it, in the explanation I gave you, and try to give you a dollar amount. Does that sound fair?
Yes, that's, yes, it would help.
You can see that I need to go much deeper into this to understand, where does the line draw from?
That's right.
These are free seats.
No cost to, a cost.
Exactly. And I'll do that, I'll do that exercise for you.
Yeah, and we'll make the argument, we'll make the argument that we can do the school choice question later, because we can still use that high school. It won't be, it won't be dead, empty space.
That's right.
So, we'll, that's our thoughts, at least from the finance committee. I have no idea what the other side of the room thinks, but from the finance committee, that's what we're thinking. But the hope is a promise to look at what the incremental costs are. And we generally know the expanded education. I mean, you're going APIB, which is, not many high schools do that. So, you're offering our children a significant educational opportunity, but there is a cost. I mean, so many people think, oh, we're making money on school choice. I hear that, and I just kind of, I'm polite with them.
You've been very nice tonight.
Listen, thank you. It would really help us to have that, it would help you to fight that argument, because, thank you.
The issue is, there's no definitive answer.
Yes, it's difficult.
I'll be making some assumptions, but I'll make those assumptions known to you.
Yes.
Relative to that. Okay. That's great. And I have no problems, thank you.
No, thank you. That's something we need.
Yep. How are we doing? We good?
Yeah, I just have a quick, yeah, I think that, the way that was worded, I think everybody just now did an awesome job of explaining everything, so I appreciate it, you know. Both of you guys did a great job. And I can wrap my brain around the question from the finance committee a little bit better now, the way it's presented. One thing that does still stand out, that I did just want to mention, and I do think this might be another arrow in that kind of quiver, is that, you know, with the school, just like the town, it does boil down to numbers, but it's not a business. And that alone is that one kind of arrow. Like, you have to consider, even though we may not be always turning a profit, we're providing a service that is essential to a community. And that does speak to the taxpayer, too, to know that, you know, again, that expanded education, this, you know, top-notch education that our students are getting, is worth it, even though maybe, from a business standpoint, it's not completely in line. But I can appreciate both perspectives.
Yeah, Jamie, that's right. We need, here's the cost, and here's what it's buying. This is something that's, you know, excellent, that it's buying, and is it worth the cost? And that's a question that each one of us individually, we each vote, has the right, but that's the key. We're buying something, we're buying something valuable in education, but how much does it cost, so you can, some people may think it's costing too much, but I can't even tell you what it costs. And that's what Tom's going to try and bring to us.
Thank you.
Excellent points. And, you know, it's, this is an interesting job that I do for you, I think, at this time of year, because I'm dealing with so much budget, that it was great for me this morning to read to the first graders in OES and understand why I do this. And I know you're all in favor of having great schools, because I think later on, we're going to be talking about, you know, housing, and there was a question about housing. I can tell you that, if not having great education system, we're in big trouble. I mean, that's hopefully somewhat of an attractor for families to join us, and also put our students in a position, in a changing world, that is incredibly different than what any of us know. So, thank you, and thank you, Jamie. Appreciate it. And Jamie, thank you for your comments.
Quick question. How do you know how many school choice students are going to get each year?
So, we have control over how many can come, and so, what will happen? So, for instance, last year, let me back up and say that, when we look at the middle school, this is helpful for you to understand, we do not want a grade class to be more than 200 students. We think that that's a maximum number for the sort of program that we want to have. And so, when we look at our numbers, and let's say, our incoming sixth-grade numbers are telling us to anticipate 190 students coming in from our elementary schools and so forth, is it, I'm just making this up now, I'm not giving, I haven't looked at the numbers to finalize it for our board. Our board hasn't voted on this yet. But in that example of 190 students already coming, we probably would open six, excuse me, 10 seats at the sixth-grade level.
So, you can't control it?
That, we can control it completely. So, last year, for instance, the only way you were getting in our system new was in the sixth grade or the ninth grade. And so, we have every right to identify what it is that we're opening up. And then, if we have more students than the number, for instance, stay with me now, in terms of, we would open up 10 seats for the sixth graders, if we had 11 or more students that would go to a lottery system.
Ah, okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Excuse me.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
What's been your experience in having to go to the lottery system? Do you normally get oversubscribed, or is it, what has been your experience?
So, I can tell you that the largest number we're getting now is in the sixth grade. And the sixth-grade number is the largest. We've had waiting lists as many as 50 to 60 students to come in. And one, I think our middle school program has steadily improved, and it's something we can be proud of. And it's also, once you get in the system, you have a seat all the way through to graduation. So, that sixth grader that comes in, they have a right to a seat at Nauset in the seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade. So, it's a way to get into, and quite honestly, with Chris Elsasser, our high school principal, and Julie Cobalt, who's our new principal at the middle school, although she was at the high school as a teacher, the program we're trying to develop is, in the region, which is the two schools, that it's in step with both the middle school and the high school. And that's not always the way it's been. You'll clearly have the same sort of program, whether you come in, in the sixth grade, or the eighth grade, or the 11th grade, for all of our region students. And that's a big plus going forward. So, that's how it works. Anything else? That's some of my notes that I've already spoken to. What is the lifespan projection for the middle school? And this is an important question as well, in the whole big case. Giovanni?
Thank you. Back in 2012, we had Habibin Associates assess, do a building assessment of the region's buildings, the high school, the middle school, and central office. And based upon that report, we use that as the base to determine the capital projects that we would be doing each year at the middle school, the high school, and the central office. So, with the high school building project coming up, we had shifted gears, whereby we're allocating the majority of those resources that we get on an annual basis to, for capital improvements, we're earmarking those to the middle school, so that we would take care of the middle school annually with that allotment, and then concentrate on the high school project renovation. So, that was the basis for that. So, in fiscal '21, the majority of the funds are for projects dedicated just to the middle
I didn't quite get the final number on that.
Thirty years.
Thirty years.
Thirty years.
Thirty years, okay.
2012. From 2012?
Thirty years from 2012.
2042.
We're looking at the projected lifespan for the middle school, yes, that'd be thirty years.
Okay, but 30 years is from 2012, when the study was done? Or is it from today?
So, I think it's from today.
Yeah.
Quite nicely.
How old will the middle school be, then?
How long will we have a middle school?
How old will it be at that point? Thirty years plus, what?
Oh, it's, when I first came down 20 years ago, you had done a major renovation on that school.
So, 50 years.
Yeah, and I know, because it was some controversy on the tiles, or?
Yeah.
What was it, Peter?
Dennis Schamath.
Green and white, yeah.
Yeah.
They had a huge renovation.
Yeah, I have a, this goes back to my long dissertation of the last question, in the sense of looking at school choice, and if the towns say no, or whatever, and we're not stuck with an empty school, because we can think about moving middle school students. Let me, which is one of the reasons why we asked this question. It's really hypothetical, because I don't think it's going to happen, but if, in case you look at it, can we bring the middle school students to the high school, maybe some have to go sixth grade, might have to go back to elementary school, whatever? Is that possible? And if it happens, what can or can't we do with the middle school building? Does it go back to Orleans right off? Or what happens with that? To help us explain some of this.
So, thank you. This is, this was the first question the school committee had to answer, once we were accepted in the MSBA process. Okay? It's the first question. And that is the configuration of the schools. And they had to give an answer to the MSBA. Will it still be a 912 high school, 68 middle school, or some other configuration? They spent four months on that issue. It's the longest period of time I've seen since I have been in this job, relative to trying to understand that answer. And they eventually came up, as you can well know, is to stay with a 912 and a 68. And once that was answered, MSBA locked in that program. Jerry, if I could take it in a little bit different direction, one of the FinComs asked me, and we've been in front of them numerous times, is, the question was, so, Tom, we've heard you speak on the demographics and the space issues, where are we going to be 10 to 15 years from now? All right? Interesting question. And the superintendents spent a whole year working with an expert out of Exeter, New Hampshire, on the demographics report. And when it was all said and done, what, and every superintendent on the Cape was involved in all these meetings throughout a whole year, that the Cape could plan on losing students at the rate of 1% a year. It didn't say in Eastham, it didn't say in Orleans, it didn't say in Feluth, okay? That there will be a slight decrease of students on the Cape. The issue then is, and I'm just trying to be as, you know, I have colleagues that I want, I'm not going to want to get phone calls from tomorrow in terms of my comments, but I think, quite honestly, what the point was, that at some point moving forward, can all these schools stay open? Right? Can they all survive and go forward? And I told that gentleman that night, I'm just going to tell you, in that room, there wasn't a superintendent, they put their hand up and said, okay, I'm all set, I'll shut my district down. Right? But over time, there will be some configuration changes in that time span of 10 to 15 years, I don't have any doubt. Now, the question is, who will it be? And how will it look? You know what I'm saying? And the issue with building a school of this size gives you the opportunity to have some options going forward.
Yes.
Right? And in terms of taking care of your configuration issue. So, that's what's going on, and I think, I can't predict who it's going to be, but you can't sustain all these schools.
Right.
10 to 15 years old.
Does, are we locked into 68912 for how long, if we're going to go through?
For this building project. But once I?
For the, I mean, once the building is completed, then we can do, I, yes, thank you.
I have a question. I know what you've just said, but I'm assuming that Brewster did the same thing when they decided to build the Eddie School. And they built the Eddie School, and now they're in the position of having to close it down, because they don't have enough students.
Right.
And that is a relatively short period of time, from when they built it, to what they're dealing with now.
Yeah, I mean, what I remember from that situation was, of course, demographic study, and I have all these students coming at the time, one of the schools had 700-plus students and so forth and so forth. Their issue is that they had to continue using, remember, there was a?
Oh, I know, they had to use it because of the bonding issue.
Yeah, and it was an educational facility, and it had to be used for educational purposes versus others. Now, what's happening there is that they've paid off the notes on it, and now they can move forward. But clearly, I think, and I want to be careful in my choosing my words, but there is some traction of looking at that configuration going forward. And what changed it a little bit was that Brewster is now putting money up. The taxpayers have voted to give. The taxpayers have voted to give seventy-five thousand dollars to the school system to look at the?
Increasing the Stony Brook.
Well, they're really looking at the consolidation of the two schools.
Right.
What school will it fit in, and things like that. And they put another dollar amount to look at the COA situation. I think that, I can tell you, because I just, we were just at the meeting. We're about to go on the street with that, and it's moving along pretty quickly. We'll see what happens. So, thank you.
I just, I thank you for your bravery. I know, that wasn't as direct as what Jerry and I wanted, but it's, I think it's a really interesting issue, and although you can't say it, Mary, I think it is very, very different from what Brewster went through, because I was on the Cape and I was in that area, and there was a huge influx of families. It wasn't like it is now. And it has no, you can't relate it to the high school building project at all, because we are actually building a new school for less students than we have now, right? This is not a major expansion of the high school. It's geared, it's downsized already.
Nine hundred.
Yes. So I think it is the perfect size for accommodating something in the future, because of its configuration as separate buildings, because of its campus style. But it's not too big. You know, we're looking at town meeting right now, and I'm thinking we may, could conceivably, have twelve hundred people, and there is no place to put them in the new school either. So I don't think it's too big. Just had to throw my two?
No, thank you very much. I appreciate your words. Is everyone all ready to move on to the next question? Okay. Does Nauset Regional High School charge activity fees for a number of possibilities? We do not have fees at the high school. That is not to say that we haven't looked at, over the years, the possibility of exploring, the one that had the most traction was that, from a parent's standpoint, was, we see so many cars here at the school.
Parking.
Why don't we have a parking?
That's the next question.
And the issue relative to the parking question is that, we looked at Sandwich High School, for instance, who had had that program in place. They had 1.5% positions, a person and a half, just to manage the parking issues. There is a cost to that. And when you look at some type of wage and health benefits for at least one of those positions, probably two if it was 50%, it is, it doesn't come without some cost. The other issue is that, in a perfect world, having worked in a high school, if I had said to nine hundred students at the first assembly that we're going to now have a sticker program, and it's going to be a hundred dollars, and line up at the main office, and over the next week, you've got to pay for it, we'd be chasing that all the way to graduation. And then you could say to me, well, you've got to get tough, Mr. Conrad, you know? They don't pay, am I going to tow a car for a fee of two hundred dollars? And just hook them up and take them out. So we saw lots of headaches, potentially with that going forward. And quite honestly, I raised the issue of equity. And we have a tremendously diverse population within all of our communities. And we believe that students should have the access to each and every program they have a desire to participate in. So that's the thinking.
One question on fees, we, do students pay for fees for the AP exams?
They do have to, they do have to pay the fee for the test, because they're going to hopefully reap the benefit of getting credits at the college.
What about, now, the IB program, I think to get an IB diploma, you have to have six tests, four core, and two others. And there's also a five-hundred-dollar registration fee, besides paying for the test. So the student's going to be paying for the registration fee, plus each of those six tests, if they want an IB diploma?
They won't be paying for the registration, but they'll be paying for the other pieces.
So, so I'll ask the crazy question. If I don't live in the four towns, is school still going to pay the five-hundred-dollar fee for the registration fee for IB? Or will the student have to pay for that?
So, right now, they're not paying. But we're going to be talking about IB here in a second. I think it's one of the slides coming up.
Yes.
So while we, because I have a number of points I want to make.
Okay, that's fine, sorry.
The other, the other issue is that, I would ask the question, where do you stop? I mean, when it has been raised to me numerous times, even as the high school principal, if in home ec. you make a Thanksgiving pie, do we charge that person for the pie? If you're in a chemistry lab and you're using chemicals, do they have a lab fee? It's just an interesting, for us, it's worked very well to go this route, but that's where we stand at this point.
Going back to the parking for a second, I don't think there's a good answer to this, but I go up by the visitor's center of light, and I see cars coming out with four kids in each car. And then the bus comes along, and the bus is half empty. I don't know if there's a way to resolve that, but that must affect the bus.
So from a bussing standpoint, the interesting piece that we did with the configuration of our buses is that we did a great deal of research on the ridership of those runs. So I don't know if you've noticed, but we have four or five different-sized buses, Giovanna?
Seventy-one, sixty-five.
Fifty-five.
Sixty-five passenger.
I think, I think at least three different configurations of buses that are responsible to that run, relative to the number of kids that we anticipate getting on that bus. The interesting thing is that, because of the distance, and I hear this in Brewster a great deal, some people can be twenty-two miles, they tell me, from the high school and live in Brewster. And so quite often, because our kids are very, very active in all the extracurricular activities, from athletics to drama, to you name it, music and so forth, they're finding a way so that parents don't have to make that run back and forth, relative to the kids getting to school and staying late and things like that. That's my general, that's my general thought on that, in terms of what's happening. And there are laws, obviously, relative to when kids can even have other kids in the vehicles. So that's typically not fooled around. The kids don't want to lose their license in any case. So they're probably the oldest students in the school at that point.
Maybe.
At some point, and I hate to use this term, I genuinely don't, but in some kids' minds, the bus are the loser cruisers.
They'll do just about anything to not be on the bus.
So, so, thank you. I appreciate that question. All right. Are we good? All right, it was a question relative to free and reduced lunch that someone wanted us to answer. And, Giovanna, I know you talked with Sue Murray, our director.
Right, I spoke with Sue Murray, and she provided this schedule for us. So she looked at the total number of Eastham Elementary students, the number that were free, reduced, and the number of paid students. And that cost, assuming both breakfast and lunch, would be an annual cost of fifty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. We also looked at the number of Eastham residents attending the middle school, and the number of Eastham residents attending the high school. So the middle school cost would be thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. And for the high school students would be sixty-eight thousand, forty dollars, for a total of a hundred and sixty-two thousand.
Okay, any questions?
What does that, what does that number represent, the annual cost? Is that net of what you receive from the paid students?
That's the cost.
That's the total cost?
That's the cost for the students that are paying students. So you'd be covering their cost as well. The free, that is from the state, that's direct cert. That's the number that we are provided, based upon each family's financial situation. It could either be Medicaid, because they receive Medicaid, they receive other different types of services. So that's, they automatically get breakfast and lunch free. And then we do have some students that qualify for a reduced rate. It's not the full amount that they have to pay, but it is reduced. So the amount that we're looking to cover is the paid students, the students that pay out of pocket, that receive no free or reduction in their rate.
So that's really the revenue that's forgone. If everyone paid full, for the full lunch and breakfast at the elementary school, the school would receive fifty-four thousand dollars more money from the students. Is that what that means?
Well, based upon the number of students at the school, Sue Murray looked at the number that are paying right now, and the number that are paying is sixty-seven students. So it's based upon those paying students, the sixty-seven students.
Sixty-seven students at the elementary school are paying fifty-four, two seventy.
So I think the question is, does it cost us money if we have free or reduced lunch students? I think that's the question, right?
Yes, that's the question.
That's the cost that the town would have to incur to cover those students that are paying.
No, that's not what they're asking. What they're, that was what I was asking. And I had a great meeting with Sue Murray, who is, I said to Amy this afternoon, honestly, it's the best meeting I've had in five years, no insult to anyone in this room.
Even ours?
She's fabulous.
Even the dinner meeting?
We have full, we have full food service for town meeting, okay? Anyway, but what I think they're asking you is different from what I was looking for for this election. This is, they're saying, do we have to subsidize, as taxpayers? Do we have to subsidize free or reduced lunch?
Right now, today.
Right now, today. And I think I know the answer to that, and that's, some years, we might. But most of the time, we don't. The USDA does subsidize it. But there are times when there are deficits, and we do.
Yes, and what would cause the deficit?
Well, the other thing is, the kids that pay for lunch, you know, sometimes they really can't afford forty-five dollars a week. And so they will not be refused lunch, because we have an amazing school system. So sometimes there's debt left at the end of the school year, and then that causes a deficit in the program.
That debt has to be covered. We can't end the year with receivables.
And end the year owing money.
So what ends up happening is, sometimes we have really generous benefactors that'll give us money towards the program to cover those students that can't afford to pay, to cover their balances. What we've done in the other districts is, it has to come out of the operating budget, so, yeah.
So you've cut something to pay for it, essentially.
Right. So, yeah.
All right, thanks. I have, one of our questions was kind of skipped. It was on parking, and you did most of it. But if I'm a student at Nauset Regional High School, and I want to drive to school, do I have to at least register my car with the office? My understanding is they do.
So they have a program where you would get a sticker, so they knew that it was a student's car in the parking lot, not a fee for it or anything else.
Right, but, okay, so they do have a sticker.
And they get that sticker from whom, Tom?
The main op, where they sign in for attendance in the morning.
So that sticker would be good for the year.
Yeah, exactly right. That was, that was really thought along the lines of a safety issue.
Security, yeah.
Okay, how are we doing? I hope we're not taking too much of your time. Talking about the International Baccalaureate Program, and I do want to start off by saying that Jerry's absolutely, I think it was Jerry that made the comment, that we are one of just less than a handful of high schools that have both a robust AP program and International Baccalaureate Program. We're in our second year of the program, and the cost to bring this program in, from a staffing standpoint or otherwise, is zero dollars. And you can, so, what are you talking about, Tom? So remember, we have X amount of students that have to have English, or have to have math, and things like that. The enrollments haven't risen to a point where we would ever have to add staff. We have simply, when we started the IB program, we went to teachers who, in some cases, their background was teaching in an IB school. A number of our staff, who we hired over the years, not because they had that background at that time, but were just great teachers, and we later found out that they had taught six years in Europe in an IB school, or whatever, whatever. So whenever we make a move, we're using our existing staff, we have not gone out, for instance, to hire an additional position for the International Baccalaureate Program. Does that make sense to everybody? And so we're in our second year, and our numbers have gone up substantially from the first year, because, quite honestly, the first-year students were daring to jump out of a proven program and try something different. And everything tells me, from Chris Elsasser, that the students are loving the program. And we anticipate, although we haven't had our final selections by students for the schedule for next year, that that number will go up yet again. And so that's a good, that's great. We got into this because we see two totally different learning styles, relative to the AP program and the IB program. And so this is a really kind of a crude answer in terms of the depth of understanding, but for many years, the AP program depended upon students who had great memorization, who could, and a total example is my son, in his junior year, took AP History. I was all psyched, I love history, David McCullough and things like this. And I told him, I said, this is going to be great, Brett, we can talk about history all year long. And when I looked at the AP program he was doing, it was two hundred years of US history, with about a million facts and figures to carry forward for the AP exam. And the IB program, in my opinion, I've been looking at this program for many years. I actually looked at IB for an elementary school in our district. I think it's interesting, by the way, that there is an elementary program in IB at Providence. And, but the IB program typically, in my opinion, in a quick explanation, it goes much deeper. And it doesn't, doesn't keep this single line at this level and go on and on like AP. This goes deeper. And so instead of reading twenty books in the course of a year in literature, they might read five, but they go real deep into the actual author in the reading and so forth. So we're excited for it, and I think it has great merit. And that's the sort of robust program that we talk about having, for our students to take advantage of it, as well as some of the choice kids who come in. And that's what I know. Questions about the IB?
That we're paying five hundred dollars for the registration for a student to take IB exams, which is fine. Although it seems as though out-of-district students, for us to pay five hundred dollars for them to, for the registration for IB, can you explain? That's a more difficult one for me to explain to the Eastham taxpayer.
So I know where you're going. I can tell you that we will be backing out of that fee. And there's no question to get this off the ground and have some kids take some risks, that the idea, and remember, I think, I think we're looking at thirty-eight students at this point in the program. And early on in the program, they're not taking a great deal of tests anyways.
Right.
That we'll back our way out of this, until we'll re-stand with our AP program, where the students are responding, they'll be totally responsive.
Totally responsive, thank you.
But we had to get it off the ground, and we have such a robust AP program, where seven to eight hundred exams are being taken now. It was convincing students that indeed, this is worthy of you considering, so. That's where we're at.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody good? Oh, this could, you know, we could be here till midnight on this one. So let me just kind of summarize. So let me just kind of summarize this. Things have changed dramatically. When I saw this question, it took me back to my days at Northrop Regional High School as the building principal. Because everybody had the exact same exam. It was set up that you could compare yourself against other schools. And quite honestly, when I knew that they were going to release the scores and the papers were going to get their hands on it, it was like getting up at 5:00 in the morning to see where we stood in a competitive concept like a sport, in terms of the scores that we had. And we are now in what we know is the next-generation test. Our elementaries have been in it a little bit longer. Our exams are all taken on technology devices. And they have introduced standards into the final report that have great weight relative to how a school or district might score. I.e., we're talking about attendance. Depending upon the attendance of that class and our situation around that, it can take points away from us. And these were standards that they feel are very important. One that's very interesting is with our students who struggle the most, our ability to move them forward relative to their learning and performance on the test. And so there's no way at all that we're going to really get into a comparing of our scores today compared to the other districts. That was the case for almost 20 years. And this next-generation test, in the truest sense, has so many other standards. And I would be glad to, you know, dive into this. But this is the sort of thing that... This is an example of some of the things that we're looking at relative to various grades. And it gets into all kinds of areas for us. So if you would like, if you don't mind, if you would like to get into MCAS test scores at a deeper level, we could... Keith Golly is our assistant superintendent. He could come in and give you a full presentation just on those MCAS results. Clearly, for us, it is an assessment to understand relative to the scoring of our kids, what we believe that they're doing well, and what areas we have to improve in. For us, it's always about how do we get better? And so a great deal of our energy is focused on where do we have to go to improve relative to any and all assessments that our kids are taking.
We might... We'll discuss, and we'll get back to you whether or not the finance committee would like to look at that.
Absolutely.
One thing I urge you to give feedback to, I know that the city of Chicago, Illinois, in their testing schools, used to have attendance as one of the criteria. And they found that people came to school very sick because if they were absent, it hurt them trying to get into one of the testing schools. So attendance in any kind of scoring, especially as you look at what's happening around the world today, is probably something that should be jettisoned and jettisons quickly.
I mean, to that point, Jerry, I mean, let's be honest. We have lots and lots of families who work the summer, the entire summer, every day in family businesses. And for them to have time, sometimes is finding a long weekend on a vacation going forward and things like that. So we aren't benefited by this at all relative to the lifestyle of our economy down here. And I'll be honest, there's a lot of pressure on the MCAS tests and so forth. Our commissioner has outright come out and said he's against this test going forward, that we're looking at other answers to it. So there's beginning to be some real traction of seeing this. And the first sign of it would be, of course, they would put a hiatus on the test for three years to see what we're going to do going forward. And many of us think that that's going to happen. Does the state require a three-year plan to close the achievement gap? We're fully aware from that assessment in the next generation where students are in that situation. As a matter of fact, Bill has just taken a group of teachers... I'm looking at the bottom piece, the Northrop Tierred Instruction piece. This is a tiered program to look at students when they struggle and try to bring a team of staff members at that school to look at the student and what type of interventions could we look at that would serve well for that student in terms of improvement? And typically, it takes anywhere from at least nine weeks to see if the suggestion change has had any impact on the learning. And I'm very, very excited about this for Bill's school and our principal at the middle school was at that same workshop. We've had tiered instruction for many, many years, and this is just advancing it even further going forward. And quite honestly, some of this is to avoid that as soon as somebody has a problem, why don't we test them and see if they qualify for special education? That we're looking to find other approaches to working with students before we even consider that as an option going forward. That's really at the tail end of options going forward for us.
I have a question about that. It's my understanding that under Governor Baker's new education bill, that what we're discussing here, the three-year plan, that you had to... Each district had to put out a written official plan as to how they're going to work on achieving a better...
Exactly.
Do a better job of the gap as far as plus and minus. Is that something that you were...
Yeah, and if you would like, when we... I'll make a note of this. If you'd like, when we do that report, we're glad to get your copy of it.
Okay, I'd like a copy of that, please.
Tom, one question that was skipped that we asked virtually every town department, difficulty recruiting due to the housing costs and so forth. That helps us not necessarily education, but looking at affordable housing.
Actually, it was in both the bills, questions and hours. Let me tell you what I... There's no question that housing is an issue. No question. Finding affordable housing is a huge problem for all of our communities on the Cape. To the question, though, we have a robust recruitment program in terms of bringing people here. My experience in hiring over 20 years is that this is typically a very attractive place for young teachers to want to come to. They might have summered here, they might have vacationed here for a couple of weeks, but they have fond memories of the Cape. Once we hire them, we actually have our own program that we have reached out to property owners or others that we know of in terms of being able to find... Now, it's not ideal housing sometimes, because sometimes it's nine months just to get them established. And sometimes it's in-law apartments and things like that. But we have been able to somewhat manage that because over my time, generally, I'm hiring out of colleges, and they're single. And many of them that I've hired over time love the area. They come down, we get them established in some housing. And about November, they think that they're going to be going to Boston all the time, and we get Sleet, and they're here for a weekend, and on and on we go. And I'm just telling the story. They're looking, obviously, to meet somebody in many cases, and it doesn't happen in the first year. And it's... I had numbers of these young teachers that we would have over my 20 years would come in and say, "Mr. Conrad, I understand you're looking to hire for a math teacher. You think you can get a handsome, young teacher?" Or vice versa. And I'd say, "I don't think that's going to be the criteria, quite honestly, but I get it." Unfortunately, it was very hard, if it didn't work out for them socially in living in this environment. After the second year, it was a number of teachers said, "Hey, listen, Tom, we'd love to stay at Northrop. If you could move it 90 miles closer to Boston, we'll stay." And that's been our toughest piece in the recruitment and keeping of teachers.
Keeping them.
That's right.
So it costs a lot of money to hire them, train them, and then you lose them?
Now, it's not crazy numbers to train them, because once they come in, they're obviously, you know, the salary scales are the lower salary scales. And the professional development that we offer them would be as extensive as having a mentor to work with them. And that's a part-time stipend that we would give. So it wouldn't be any more than $1,000 that we would have invested in that mentor for the year of working with that teacher. Now, there's a lot of energy that goes in on both sides, because they have to learn the system, and we have to teach the system to them. So that's been our experience. But there's no downplaying the issue with housing on the Cape, though. It's a major issue. Okay, so we picked that one up, Jerry. We're all set there.
I think you answered number seven in the elementary school.
Yeah, you don't have to...
I already checked.
We just go through them.
We did this together.
So I want you to know we're making good progress on this powerpoint, so... We don't need breaks, we'll just keep going. And one of the things beyond the MCAS division of the district is just some key points and a deeper learning... That's a very, very common phrase being used in terms of our initiatives. Project-based learning is something we're spending a great deal of time on. My particular interest in the project-based learning was the brain research talking about retention of material. Kids in project-based learning, the retention levels of information go up much, much higher. Immersion experiences, you know, I think you've heard so many times about the 21st century skills, and we're well into the 21st century, so it's pretty old stuff. But creativity, critical thinking, we're talking about eventually being able to work in small groups and so forth. You see, we mentioned problem solving. It all fits together with kids not being machines who just memorize data for the sake of regurgitating it for a test, but rather going into problems and tough problems to solve that aren't easily figured out. Reflection of the work that students are doing. Just recently, it's not up here, but we just put a new homework policy in place relative to research. I'll just give you one example of that. In math education, and it's been researched, that a student should only be asked to do five or six questions for homework. And why is that? Because in five or six questions, they'll show whether they truly understand the concept, if it's the right questions. And they'll show if they don't understand the concept without almost punishing them to try and do the other 30 problems. We are moving from an industrial-age learning into the 21st century. And they're asking for two different things. So that's been our focus relative to that. What are you planning for enrollment projections as a result of the apartment, the new housing? I think that's for selling a property?
This is elementary school questions?
Yeah, this is... We're into elementary now. We're shifting in. So the only information Jackie was kind enough to share with me, I believe we've got seven units people have moved into at this point. I think they're smaller units, and at this point, there are no children in those seven. But we're particularly waiting to see what happens when families begin moving into the lodger units, the two bedrooms and the three bedrooms at this point.
We would love to hear that information from someone, to be honest with you, as far as preparing for that in some way. Does anybody have any information?
Are what, 13? 10, between 10 or so three-bedroom units. So not huge, but that could be...
Seven, only.
Oh, only seven?
Only seven. 10%, roughly.
And two of the seven have children, they're just not living there full-time. They're part-time children.
That's right, I'm sorry, Jerry.
Going between two parents. But we should be fully rented within the next few months. So it'll hit you next year, and we should have some data for you, you know, by the summertime, anyway.
I just have a question on that. When people signed up for the rentals, what sort of information did we take from the people that were approved? Did we take...
Did the town take anything, are you saying?
The people that were approving the rental for each apartment, would they have taken information when they filled out a form?
Yes. But there were over 200 of them, and we only have 65 units.
Right, I realize that. But of the ones that ended up being accepted, wouldn't we have information about those families?
Yeah, but they're not... They're only accepted 30 days before they move in. So it's not final until 30 days before they move in.
Oh, it's not final. Oh, I thought... Oh, okay.
So we're doing two buildings at a time. So right now, there are four buildings that have certificate of occupancy. So the second two buildings, they're moving people into now.
I thought everything was approved prior to just work.
No, they can... Because of the federal guidelines and the state guidelines, they have to run all the income numbers within 30 days of when the people move in.
Thank you.
Yeah, the lottery was one thing.
Yeah.
And that just established the numbers. Everyone got a number, all the way down to 200 and whatever, 220 or something. 260, yeah. But then they have to go through qualifying as they go down the list.
And that's the tougher one.
That's the tougher one.
So that takes a while.
Exactly.
Okay, so we're going into looking at class size at the elementary school. And so the question, of course, is about what triggers a point in terms of the class size to add another class.
Yeah, so as far as Eastham Elementary is concerned, if you go to the next slide, Tom. The school committee had set these targets as far as minimum and maximum in a class. If you can look at that for a minute. And then the next slide actually shows what we presently have in our classrooms.
Can you send us those slides?
For a price?
For a price, yeah, I understand. Well...
Yeah, we can.
We do recommend or not recommend, but that's all right.
We'll have them tomorrow morning.
Okay.
I think are the projected numbers for next year to increase, like over time? Does it look like the numbers are increasing regardless of the housing?
That's the question, you know, as far as getting that information.
I mean, regardless of the housing? Does it seem as though Eastham Elementary numbers... And I could be remembering this incorrectly, but I remember seeing something about different elementary schools within the region, and it seemed like Eastham's was the one that was either at least leveling or slightly increasing. It was one of the only schools that wasn't decreasing. And I don't know if that's correct or not.
Well, over the course of the last five years, we've decreased in enrollment. And the reason why you see a grand total of 202 is because we added Wellfleet's preschool to our building last year.
That's right.
And so that's where you see a total of 33 students. But if you subtract that, we're, you know, below 170.
Okay.
And so we've been really holding steady, to be quite honest with you, but decreasing. And I believe the census right now for kindergarten is at 19 so far. So I mean, we're going to do our kindergarten...
Yeah, and we've noticed the bumps. We have little bumps. But there's always like one class that's bigger.
Yeah.
But generally speaking, it's staying the same, which is good for the region.
For the region, yeah. That's right.
So the question as to whether or not to, you know, delete a class or to, you know, increase by a class, just going back historically, there was this one bump class at about 39 students or so. And, you know, liking class sizes the way they were, you know, it was voted to keep that class divided among three teachers. So it really depends on, you know, the budget of that particular time and the criteria for which we're going to increase class size. But traditionally, tend to enjoy class sizes between 14 and 15. But with that said, in Massachusetts, you know, the average class size is between 20 and 21 for grades one through five.
So we have some capacity.
Absolutely. And so that answers the question about.
For sale.
For sale, right. I think physically the school can hold up to 400 students, you know, moving people around. And even as far as increasing class size without having to hire any new staff, it would just be that we would increase class size from.
Yeah, but one caveat is that we gave, you know, 70% preference to Eastham residents for the Nauset Green.
For for sale.
So what we're finding is, you know, most of the people going in on the list are already Eastham residents, they're just securing better housing.
Moving from one place to another.
Yes.
I believe four of our students are living there now.
Yeah.
They've already been in.
They've already been in school. So what's going to happen, though, is then that we will end up having some residences that were rented by people that have moved into Nauset Green that will then be rented by other people. So that's where you may see an influx into the district.
Right.
Unless they're living in somebody's basement and moving, finally being able to find a place for them to live.
Their own, yeah.
But I think presently we would welcome that. You know, I believe we have the staffing and the programs in place that could absorb, you know, a number of students.
And the facility.
Okay.
I guess, I mean, you can speak to this. But again, I mean, the school could, you know, just looking at the numbers of sixth, seventh, and eighth, I mean, physically the school could absorb these kids. But I think as far as the programs are concerned, we don't offer what the middle school offers for those sixth, seventh, and eighth graders.
Yeah, I think our question was more physically, could you hold that? Then you have to work on.
Things would have to be adjusted, you know, the way, the way it's configured now. But yes, we could absorb that, the number of kids that are now attending the middle school.
So I just want to make sure that this would take some substantial time to study, studying the facility to the program that we would eventually bring in there. And obviously, there are a number of offerings that we would see middle school-age students having that would have to be compensated for space-wise in a move like this. So that's why we're taking the stance that at this time, let's, if indeed the boards would like us to go deeper with that, we'd be glad to. But it would take a substantial amount of time.
Yeah, the questions were, were asked just to see what options potentially are out there as you look at, especially with such, I mean, I don't have my pulse on the figure of four towns, but the number of issues brought up with school choice, what kind of options potentially do we have and so forth? And that's why this was asked. It wasn't, I don't, I don't have an issue to bring the middle school into, back into the, into the elementary schools, but.
And if I may speak on, you know, I don't want to alarm any parents of Eastham residents because this is a finance committee question only. We have not discussed it. We're not recommending it. We're not endorsing it, nor would it be appropriate at this time.
Right.
Nor is the finance committee endorsing it. We're just asking what options we have.
Be in the front pages.
I could see my face on targets.
We have to keep you out of trouble.
Yeah, I know.
And so here we are relative to what is the Massachusetts state guideline for class sizes at the elementary grades. Now, Bill, if you want to just.
Yeah, just, we had mentioned that about at 25. And I believe the, the Nauset Public Schools Policy Manual also says a maximum of 25 per class.
Okay.
That's a big preschool class.
Yeah. Big kindergarten class, too.
Okay. Eastham Elementary, great building and.
Hold on, Tom. Jamie had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jamie.
Sorry. It wasn't part of these questions, it's a separate question. I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. So with this, there's still going to be cuts to special needs teachers, correct?
On here, are they?
Oh, into the budget. That's, that's. Are we waiting? Yeah. That's coming.
So we're about to get into that. We're not quite there.
This was just, we just did the finance committee questions first.
Okay, never mind, I'll wait.
Okay, so I think we made it through the questions for the most part. Thank you. Appreciate, we actually find it helpful for us to have the questions and the answer. We're kind of shifting into a few pages, a few slides relative to the elementary budget. And then we'll get into the pink slip that Jamie mentioned. Okay. So the first piece is, our boards are very familiar with this, but I'm sure along the lines of your operation as well. For us, we start over the summer, we're predicting what we think will be the guidance from the towns relative to the budgets you would like to see us bring in. And in September, October, the principals are working with their staffs, reviewing their enrollment data. Because remember, on October 1st, that's the lock-in day of the number that you represent for state funding and so forth. We probably have met with Bill, I'd say probably seven, eight times, and we being Giovanna and I and Bill. And we go over his requests, we look at what the town is asking us to bring the budget in at. And this discussion goes on back and forth as we, we look at the thing that we haven't given you tonight, although we have it for you, is the line-by-line-by-line items relative to the overall budget. And we typically like to get the budget to the, the finished budget to the board, school committee. And for their opportunities, this happened, they had it over the holiday breaks and a chance to review it. And then we begin having some discussion at the board level relative to Bill and Giovanna and ourselves, looking at different questions that they have. And we just, the other night, last week, I think it was, or a couple of weeks ago, went into a public hearing and to hear that number. And we're now at that point, the board has not voted the number. I assume at the next meeting coming up here in March, they will do so in terms of what they want to do with that. And you'll have a number from, from the school committee that you can move forward with. Okay? These are our enrollments. This is an example of what we would be looking at in terms of comparison from, and this is giving us a comparison between FY '19 and '20 enrollments. You can see the difference. People go right to the totals. I remember Bill mentioned that the 194 number is because we've combined the preschool program. We don't, we don't have a preschool program in Wellfleet anymore. And it was getting very, very difficult to get specialists to go out that far, to work with kids individually. And so they are now together, both the Eastham and Wellfleet students relative to preschool. And it's working out very, very well. It's been a real plus, I think. And this gives you a picture of the enrollments over the years. And you can see that at the very, very top is the 1920 number, as we look at it from a grade standpoint. And it carries across for totals. And, you know, it's, without saying that, this is not unlike any other region community. It's seen, has seen a slight drop in its enrollment. But as we've already discussed, we're hopeful that in the Affordable Housing Project, we're going to be picking up a few more students and come forward with a little bit bigger school at that point.
Tom, the pre-K, that's Nauset regional costs of the, the elementary school costs are K through five?
Giovanna?
The pre-K costs are determined by a three-year average, and that's provided from Dr. Coretti. So each of the elementary carries a line item for special needs pre-K. So that's reflected in the budget.
Comes out of that budget, thank you. Okay.
Okay. All right, here we go. So these are just some of the accomplishments that we've been working with in terms of second step. We spent a great deal of time on social and emotional learning, and that's an issue for all of our schools. Matter of fact, all schools across the United States. The whole school celebrations are, if you haven't had the opportunity to get there on a Friday morning, when they, they host that once a month, it's fantastic, the mixture of parents and students and all kinds of awards. Bill has a Beacon Awards Program that acknowledges students in terms of some, some positive performance. We share partnerships with Timbernook Outdoor Learning, National Seashore, the Audubon. And we are using technology at the grades three and five, they have their own iPads to use on an independent basis during the day. And then we use, we have iPads on cards that go into the grades a little bit younger. This is an award that they received, Bill, this is the.
Yeah, we received accommodation award, but this was for the, the old test as far as MCAS was concerned. But we all went up to the State House and received that award. Exciting for the school, just for their performance on MCAS that year.
Project-based learning is, is that, we had almost 60 teachers, mainly elementary teachers being trained. We have a partnership with MIT, their creative lab for professional, professional growth for our teachers about doing projects with their students going forward. And here we are, the operating budget. And it is that time of the evening where we need to get our pink form so that Giovanna can walk you through it.
The school committee was provided the version one budget of the elementary school back at the December 16th meeting. And at that point, Principal Crosby presented a budget of $3,769,061, which reflected an increase of $91,901 or a 2.5% increase. Since that meeting, there was things that came to light after that meeting regarding a student's educational plan. The student was being educated in Wellfleet. Wellfleet had a program for the student. However, based upon the needs of the student, Wellfleet could no longer service the student, and therefore we had to move the student to the collaborative. And with the collaborative move, transportation was also required. So what we did was we took the amount that was budgeted for the student attending Wellfleet, we took that off the, the budget, and we added the tuition for the student attending the collaborative and the transportation costs for that move. So the budget at the January 27th meeting, version two, came in at $3,866,197, an increase of $189,037 or an increase of 5.14%. Since the January meeting, the superintendent had conversations with the town manager Jackie Beebe, and Jackie was able to restore additional dollars because previously the, we had budgeted for a reduction of a full-time librarian to a 0.8%. So Ms. Beebe was able to restore the 20% and that added $22,842 back into the school's operating budget. So now the school committee is reviewing version three of the budget, and that is $3,889,039, an increase of $211,879 or a 5.76% increase as compared to last year's budget.
I have a bunch of questions. Number one, I, was one of the first things I had on my list as far as the librarian was concerned. It's article number or line item 2104, and I didn't understand why you were reducing it 50%. And so I appreciate the fact that you've put some of that back in. I have a question on, it's on page two of your budget, line item 2062, where you have electricity cost of $38,438. I know you've got solar panels on the elementary school. What does that, what does that pay for?
It's not the same as what's on.
It's not the same as the library?
On this building, right. It's not behind the meter like this is.
What?
It was a different program, so.
What does the town get?
It's a good question.
There's not much.
We get credits.
You get credits.
I mean, I can't speak, but we're pretty close to net neutral as a town with adding the library and some other things. But Amy's right, it's a different program that. Solar panels on the DPW building are on a different program. So the credits and stuff of that are different than what you would normally see on the other town buildings. So I can provide more information if needed, but we do get a massive amount of credit for whatever the elementary.
So it doesn't, doesn't, doesn't have any bearing on the electricity cost for the elementary school? I mean, it's a town, it's a town project.
It does. We pay the bills, we get credits on certain accounts, and we have to choose the accounts, so.
So where the, where the electricity is produced isn't necessarily where the credits, where its credits go.
How it affects the cost of the building.
Exactly. We have to spread it out over, over the town. So there's, there's some credits going to the pumping station to pump water. But even though that doesn't have a solar panel on it, it uses electricity, we have to spread the credits out. So we do that once a year, we determine what the percentage is going to be. I could give you the breakdown of what the elementary school produces, but it is a different credit, the credits they get are very different than what you would get on the library. And the library's on the SMART program, too. That's vastly different than the other programs and the other solar thing. So I can give you a breakdown of that?
No, I'm just, I was just wondering, since I know they have solar panels.
Yeah.
And they've got an expense of close to $40,000, you know, why?
Yeah.
You've answered that. Yeah. I have another question on the tutor salaries. It's line item 2100, it's on page one. And you've, you've spent monies on that line item every year, $10,000, $16,000 for the umpteen number of years. And this year you've got, you've taken it out, you've removed it. I was wondering, I would, why, why that is. I'm line item 2100, it's tutor salaries. You've spent 15, 10, 15, all the way across, and all of a sudden issue, you've got nothing.
You know, in looking at the budget, in trying to present a 2.5% budget, we're looking at staffing, we're looking at program needs and student needs. And we have the staff to provide, we provide tutor services for, for children in, in school, could be, you know, K to five. But in looking at places to reduce, I was confident that we have the staff in the building to be able to provide the level of support that you were providing.
Okay, because you've, obviously you've, you've needed it all, all the other past years.
Mary, I have a little question to follow up on.
I'm sorry? Oh, I'm, I'm, I have another question. I, I see that you, in some places you have contracted services for, for the building outside, you use third-party. And other times you've got things that you're paying for. I'm just wondering whether the DPW would be able to pay for some of those things instead of paying outside third-party folks for landscaping or for toilet paper and stuff like that?
It depends what it is. So sometimes it's cheaper to do it in-house, and sometimes the expertise is needed to vend it out. So it, it very much depends on what the service is. We do some lawn maintenance, but not all.
It just looked, the ones they had there, it looked like it would be something that maybe the town could do for cheaper than, than third-party.
That's it?
Jamie.
Jamie had a follow-up.
Yeah, it's kind of a follow-up to the reading tutor question that you.
The reading, the tutor question?
Yeah, so, and I, maybe my understanding is wrong on this, but when kids come to the elementary school, they're probably at a more varied level of reading, per se, when they come to elementary school versus when they go to middle school, high school, because they've all kind of had the same kind of baseline along the way. But elementary school, some kids are probably here, other kids are here. And it's my understanding that the role of the reading tutor is to kind of step in so you don't have to end up with ed, special ed, and like, special ed teachers hired to help people, you have that person, it's kind of like that tiered thing you were saying. It's someone who would help bring everybody to the same level.
The same level?
Yeah, without going into special needs, was my understanding. And I didn't know with, it seems as though there's cuts to special needs, and then this reading tutor disappearing, but we're seeing money being funded into a tier program. I just wonder if someone like a reading tutor is that segue. I mean, I could be totally wrong, I'm not in the schools. And also. And also, I didn't know if that was any type of grant funding that could go toward a program like that.
I, I believe originally that, you know, the tutor came on board at the school through the kindergarten grant.
Oh, okay.
Originally. And so, yeah, she provided some tremendous support and interventions for, for kids. But again, in looking at the staff, the student need, you know what I mean, this class size, and then also looking at the budget and, and looking for areas, because in all honesty, in order to reduce, you see this pie chart up here, in order to reduce a budget from, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or so, to get it to two and a half percent, you know, you're looking at those areas, and you're looking at, do I have the staff to continue those programs? And in, in, in our minds, yes, we do, with the class size numbers, with the amount of special educators we have, with the amount of ed assistants that we have relative to student enrollment.
I agree with Jamie. I think that, that at the beginning, when people, when the young students come in, and they can be, coming from varied, various backgrounds, that that's the time to spend time with them, to bring them up to speed so that they can proceed on rather than catching it later down the road, so.
So I, I do want to speak about our personnel situation. And during my time with you, I have been fairly successful in bringing in budgets at, at the number that you had requested because of retirements. Now, as, as a high school principal at Norset for many years, when, when I had someone retiring, and I, and we don't purposely just try to save money, we're looking for excellent teachers, but we don't want every teacher being sixty-five or older, or every teacher being twenty-one to twenty-five. We're looking for a mixture of, of, of age and so forth. That as, as the principal of the high school, when I saved forty thousand dollars on, on a retirement, someone went out and I hired a young teacher, I used to have that money to do what I needed to do in the budget in terms of just spending it at the high school. And I don't, I bet many of the board members weren't aware of that, that, that was just additional dollars that I had as your principal. When I took over as a superintendent, I, I felt it was only fair that when we were trying to bring budgets in at a reasonable number, that when we had a retirement with paper in hand, that was absolutely going to happen, we have used that in trying to get these budgets to a point where they, they met the needs and the requirements of, of the town boards. In other words, we were, when we saved money in retirement, retirements, we identified it immediately, and that helped to bring budgets in at the number that you've asked us to do it. Now, Bill has been in that position for a number of years, that he has had, in a small school like that, one retirement can make a big difference in terms of bringing it in or not. And it happens, this is a year that he has really no retirements. And so, that's really some of, some of the, the financial issues that we deal with relative to the staffing issue.
Sure.
Yeah, I have a, a question. I think there are twenty-two special needs students in the elementary school, or somewhere around that number, approximately. And listen, we owe to meet their IEPs and so forth, and that's great. But I noticed we have a, a full-time speech-language pathologist at the elementary school. And I know from other school districts I've been involved with, that elementary schools that have six hundred students and so forth, and a large thing, two schools share, you know, the speech pathologist is, is a traveler. Have we, I, I mean, I don't know what the IEPs are, and I'm not asking for any of that, but is there a thought that, for example, the speech pathologist, to share that with Wellfleet, or share that individual with Orleans and have them travel one day here, one day there, or half a day here, half a day there? I, I mean, it's kind of, kind of looking at it more regionally in some of the special, special needs area with, with, with an employee?
Yeah, I would think that that would be something to look into a little bit deeper, and, and of course, a possibility as, you know, student needs decline, and IEP goals and objectives are also, you know, things that we have to pay attention to. But you're, you're completely right, that that could be an option, you know, going forward.
So, as you know, Jerry, it's all driven by the IEPs.
Yes.
And the sort of services that students get, it could, it could be a wide range of, of individual needs depending upon each, each student. So, but your, your point is, of course we would.
Okay.
Yep.
I've got another question. One measure of success of a school system is what the students return out, where they end up. Do you track it at all? Do you track these students, and do you have some numbers on...
So, so when you say where they end up, you mean in terms of graduating from the high school?
Well, some are going to go to college, some are going to stick or stay in the area, some may move to Boston.
The best ones end up on the East End border, Slakman.
You mean total failures, you mean?
So, we can, we can give you, shots fired. We can give you a full report of exactly what happens with every senior class relative to going on for further education. The vast majority of our students go on for further education. And I, I'll just tell you a philosophical how I believe. I believe that as educators, we are, are dream makers, and, but it's not our dream. It's, it's, it's a student's dream. And whatever they feel is something they want to really pursue, and, and whether it's going on to a four-year university, or a two-year, or working in the community. I, I had a student once, when I asked him what, what's, what his dream was, he told me he wanted to be the best plumber there was. And I said, and I, and I, we have probably a couple of members of the board who probably, if I mentioned the name, they'd remember it. And so I said to John at that time, then be the best plumber you can be, and you've got to do the following things. You need to take some business classes, you need to take a law class, and on and on. And so he sure enough became a plumber. His family had a business. And when I saw him years later, he told me that his dad was retiring, and he's about to take over the business with seven plumbers in the business. And I, and I thought, good for you, John, you know, I, I know what I pay for a plumber, and, and he, I'm sure he's doing very well. And I also can tell you a quick story about it. We, we are, we have a number of students who would, would, would be accepted to, to name recognition schools that everybody goes, "Ah," about, "Oh, my word, he got in there? It's unbelievable." I have great friends say to me, "Tom, you've got to put that in the paper. You've got to, you know, you've got kids going to some of the best schools in the world." And, and I said, "No, I don't." Because only the kids that want to go to those schools should go to those schools. And if you truly believe that everybody should have a dream of what they want to chase, and they get that dream, that's what I want to put in the paper. So, and I, and I caution, I was with a, a parent and a student looking at, at Norset, and, and I was telling her this, this piece, and I, I reminded her, "It's not your dream, Mom. It's really your, your daughter's dream." So I can get that for you. I think you'd enjoy looking at it. There's a, there's a report that I can put in your hands, and I'll get it to Jackie, and, and she can pass it on. Thank you. All right, how we doing? Everybody staying with us? All right.
Coffee here.
We're not sleeping yet.
All right. So we're through that. Welcome to our middle school. I'm sure you all recognize it, beautiful building. And I did this on purpose, although it's not the best. This is a, a drawn picture of the high school. You can see the turf field, obviously, but I wanted to draw your attention to the left side of the beautiful, unbelievable tennis courts. All right? And thank you, thank you, thank you, right? They're, they're absolutely beautiful. As you know, through your CPA monies and so forth, you were instrumental in making that happen. I can't, I'll never forget that generous opportunity, and you use them with your rec program, and your, your community is able to use them anytime they're open. So I thought it was a pretty cool picture, though. Okay, we're just going to kind of roll through. And many of you have this, this data anyways, in terms of the report I gave you on October one, if you remember, you get that report, and it details lots of information. This is just a portion of it, in terms of what's happening with our, our school populations and so forth. Middle school, and again, you can see, you know, I don't, I don't sense at all that there are drastic changes happening in the region either, in terms of their overall numbers, and pretty, pretty consistent with just some, some slight movement. I, I'm going to just start, this is, this is interesting, because I've done this in Orleans and, and budget escalators, and, and understanding going forward, what are the escalators that, that in some cases are out of our control, but we have to deal with going forward? Technology is, is, is becoming a, a, a bigger issue for us. I can tell you, for instance, I, I'd love to have the conversation, but not tonight, about what are you doing about cyberspace security and protecting data and so forth? That's becoming a real issue. It is in, in many areas of our country, in business and things like that. Plus, we're, we're learning as we go forward what, what the life expectancy of some of this equipment is, and, and good news is, it's lasting longer than we anticipated, and we're not replacing it as, as quickly as we thought we were going to. Special, special education. And we live in a, in a society that people move around, and it is probably the most difficult job for both Giovanna and I, because we've worked directly on this with our head of special education in terms of students moving in a district. When it's midway through the year, we're almost through our budget, and we've got to come up with a program for that student. This, this happens, I would say, probably five or six times a year now in different communities, and, and it puts pressure on both our budget and the town's budget, and we're, we're obligated to develop that program for that student, obviously. Social emotional learning, this is a, this is an initiative that we have throughout our system, and we have the ability to be surveying our students relative to their, their health risk. We call it the health, health riser, survey. And I can tell you that students are reporting to us at, at all levels, more anxiety, more depression, and more issues going forward. And it's something we have to really keep our eye on going, going into the years ahead of us. Salaries, we, we are, as you, if we had spent more time on the pies at the region level, because they have to pick up their fringe benefits, the region-only budget, our salaries are taking ninety-one, ninety-two percent of the overall budget to the salary issue. And that's, that's unsustainable over a series of years, and so we have to monitor that very closely. And we're very, very thankful of, of once again, getting a year where we had zero percent increase in our healthcare costs. But I'm, I'm fairly liberal with looking at the forecast. Giovanna is tremendously conservative, and she has convinced me that the likelihood of that happening a third year in a row is probably not very, very high. So we need to take that into consideration as we move into the next year. I just talked about the pie charts. I gave you the numbers, that you were talking ninety-some odd percent of that is relative to our labor costs, and, but remember, in the region, we're picking up the fringe benefits and the region only, that's twenty-ish percent, and that's the difference between looking at, let's say, our elementaries that are seventy-one, seventy-two percent, where the town's picking up the fringe benefits. So it's a pretty similar situation. And now, we're ready for the yellow sheet.
Yellow sheet?
We are almost there.
Don't bury the leaves now.
I know.
The question is down.
Exactly.
So the top section of the gold sheet details the various line item budgets. We have the middle school, the high school, the region only, and the region share of the central office expenses. So the total expenses that were proposed in the budget for fiscal twenty-one is thirty-one million seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars, which is an increase of seven hundred and ninety-six thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars, or a two point five seven percent increase. The region-only budget, the amount that's reflected here is net of the expenses that we will be charging directly to the various revolving funds, which would be on page two of that yellow document. So we plan on utilizing money from Circuit Breaker, what we anticipate receiving in fiscal twenty-one. We're looking at eight hundred and thirty thousand six hundred dollars. However, we will be using a hundred thousand dollars from the revolving fund balance in fiscal twenty-one. The school choice revolving fund, we anticipate receiving school choice students, two hundred and eighty-three students, and we typically use fifty-five hundred, because we do get a special education increment for the special needs student. So two hundred and eighty-three students have fifty-five hundred dollars each. We're looking at receiving one million five hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred dollars. This reflects a decrease of almost five hundred and seventy-two thousand. That's because in the prior years, we not only utilized the funds from school choice, but we also utilized the, some of the fund balance that we were carrying. At one point, we were carrying a robust balance in school choice. That's no longer the case. Therefore, that huge reduction. We will be utilizing funds from the Cape Cod Tech Revolving. We provide consulting services to their, for their food service program. We've been doing that for quite a few years now. So we'll be utilizing ten thousand dollars, and that's an increase of four thousand from last year's budget. And finally, we'll be using the International Student Revolving Fund. We haven't used this in the last three years, but we're going to be using twenty-five thousand. So that's an increase of twenty-five thousand from last year. So we're going to be utilizing almost two point five million dollars out of the revolving accounts to charge expenses directly to those revolving funds, and those are not reflected on this document here. And that's typically what we've been doing over the last couple of years. Okay? So the next section is the income section. The state base aid, we have a slight increase here. We're budgeting three million five hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars, and that's an increase of thirty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. The charter school aid, there's a slight reduction. We're budgeting fifty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars, or a reduction of thirty-three hundred and ninety-five dollars. The state transportation aid, we're level funding that, eight hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. The Turo MP Town tuitions, we're budgeting two million one hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. This reflects a reduction of two hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and three dollars. Every year during the budget process, I reach out to my counterparts in Turo and P Town and ask them to provide me with the amount of students that they anticipate sending to Norset in the next fiscal year. When I spoke to Turo, they indicated ninety-one students, and that's a reduction of seven students from what we had projected in fiscal twenty. Also, when I reached out to P Town, they said, "Well, we are budgeting for twenty-eight students to come to Norset. However, we anticipate that seven of those students will be going to the tech next year." So I had to budget for twenty-one students. Okay? So last year for fiscal twenty, we budgeted for a total of a hundred and twenty-seven students. This year, we're budgeting for a hun, fiscal twenty-one, we're budgeting a hundred and twelve students. You know, the current enrollment for fiscal twenty, Turo is ninety-one and a half students right now. We had budgeted for ninety-eight, so we've got a reduction there. And the P Town, we currently have twenty-seven students, so it's a reduction of two.
Giovanna, can I just ask a question? I know you have contracts with, with Turo, and you have a contract with Province Town.
Correct.
Are they, are they both paying the same amount?
Yes. This will be year two of the contract, and they are both paying the same amount.
And what is that?
Eighteen thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars.
Eighteen thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars?
Eighteen, yes.
Thank you.
I do want to add to that conversation that it wasn't always reported. I don't, I don't ever remember it being reported to the boards, but both Turo and Province Town have to provide their own transportation.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't, even to get to school, they have to run their own buses. Transportation, as you know, is very expensive.
Especially...
Go ahead. And the other piece of it is that we have clauses in that contract relative to if a student were to come in, needs special education services, maybe even an ed assistant, it's on their dime, not our dime. So this is a very fair contract, and we never used to talk about even the transportation. The vote, the vast majority of voters never even understood they were paying for that, so that's a, that's a, that's a big amount. So thank you.
Do they have, do they use a bus, or do they...
They have their bus, they have their own bus. Turo likewise. Turo likewise.
Thank you.
The elementary assessments for therapists, this is what we bill out to the four, the five elementary schools and this is all information that's provided based upon need and that's provided by the Director of Student Services, Dr. Kretti. So, we're looking at $227,140, that's an increase of $24,711. The estimated receipts, that encompasses interest that we earn on our investments and also Medicaid funds, Medicaid money that we receive, that we bill out for services that we provide to the special education students and any other miscellaneous revenue that we receive. So, based upon what we've taken in so far this year and projected out for fiscal '21, we projected $211,000 and that's an $11,000 increase. The transfer from E and D, we're looking at a transfer of $946,760 or an increase of $356,760. So, the total income is $7,908,594 and that reflects an increase of $199,331 compared to last year. So, we get down, we look at the expenses, we take into account the income and we get to a total operating budget of $23,889,253 and that's an increase of $596,801 or 2.56%. The next section is the debt service. The debt service is on the debt incurred for the high school project, which was the roofs and the windows and as well as the roof replacement on the middle school. So, the debt is for those projects as well as the interest on the bond anticipation notes for the feasibility study for the high school, the $1.3 million. So, combined, it's $256,450 and this is a reduction of $10,836. This is due to a reduction in the interest on the debt as well as the reduction on the bond anticipation note interest. Okay? We will be utilizing $1,154 of additional E and D. When we had bonded the high school and the middle school projects together, we ended up taking more money than what was required and so the revenue officer wants us to amortize that over the life of the note. We have a different revenue officer this year and he has indicated this, he wants the amount that we're earmarking reduced to $1,154, so that's the reduction there. So, the total debt to be funded is $255,296, a reduction of $7,884 or a reduction of 3%. The capital plan projects, $545,665 and that represents a 2.5% increase from the prior year and that's $13,309. So, the total assessment is $24,690,214, an increase of $602,226 or a 2.5% increase. And then the next section, we detail each member town's assessment percentage and the percentage is based on the enrollment of October 1st. In this number, we also have to take into account not only the number of Eastham students but also the number of students going out of the district that need to be counted in this number. So, in Eastham's case, you saw a reduction of 11 students when compared to last year. So, the total FY '21 population is 233 students and that's 19.4329%. And then we detail the debt assessment to Eastham is $49,611. The capital plan projects is $106,38. The operating is $4,642,374 for a total assessment of $4,798,023. Any questions? Good job. Well, thank you.
Thanks for the good news. Because I remember several years ago, we had an increase of about $250,000 because Brewster, for some reason, that year was down a bunch of kids and we went up, so.
Sometimes you win and sometimes...
That's right. We're winning this year.
Usually think of Brewster as having more families than Eastham.
But it's the changes that count too.
It's the change from year to year.
Giovanna, on these, on the debt, when are we, the bonds we have here to repay, when are we done with them? How, what are the end dates of those?
We have a ways to go. I think we're looking at 2035.
2035, yeah, you won't have to worry about me in 2035.
The 20-year bonds.
Probably, nobody on this board.
Thanks.
We won't be here then.
All right, so, thank you and Giovanna, thank you as always. And we've just got two more slides and then we can wrap it up if you want. One of the pieces we want you to know...
I ended with the $200,000 decrease in budget.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
But we want to make you aware that we have worked hard behind the scenes. These are just the large ticket items that we're pleased with this year. The solo projects, we actually signed in on the Wellfleet landfill project and they didn't have anywhere near the ability to take on all that capacity when they built it and so we are partners with them and benefiting from that project at a very high level. Along those lines, I will say that the other solo project you're going to see is that through the Cape Cod Light Compact, we're building canopies in the, where the buses are parked, in the parking lot off of our office, down by...
Down at the middle school?
Down at the middle school. And so, we're going to have canopies that the buses can go under and stay out of the weather and that's...
Are they solar canopies?
We're going to have canopies, concrete canopies, that put solar onto that and they're going to pretty much take care of all the power needs of that middle school.
So, then we'll see a projection in electrical.
Yeah, for sure. Matter of fact, we even flew around with some battery pieces. Jim Noack, he's an assistant to Giovanna, has pushed real hard that in terms of our ability to store the energy in the event of an emergency and things like that. And so, that's going to help us tremendously. You can see, we continue to work on retrofitting to the LED lights throughout the system and the piece relative to the canopies, in partnership with that, we are switching over driver education vehicles to electric. And so, we have two electric cars on site now and the incentives are unbelievable for 36-year leases for the two vehicles.
Thirty-six months, maybe?
What's that?
Months, maybe?
Yeah, 36 months.
I was going to say 36 years.
I'd like to be driving that car.
Well, when you hear the price, you'll really like it because it was $4,300 for the two vehicles, so, thank you, Amy. And along with that, the yellow boxes that you see on our parking lot, those are charging stations. If you put two in, ever so, it was for free. Trouble with it is that, who wants that telephone pole?
Horizon.
Horizon and we're five months waiting for them to move that pole so that we can finish the project and if you have anybody that you can give us to call at Horizon, we'd be happy to have that. And then, you know, we talked about the bus, we think that's been a big plus, but there are probably 100 of small items that are 100 or $200 but they all add up. We call, the program we call it is how do we help ourselves? And so, thank you. And, the last one, I promise. And talking about the region in particular here, you can see that Massachussetts High School is a national Blue Ribbon High School. It's a Massachusetts Van Gaiden School of Excellence, Massachusetts Compass Award for Academics, they're the only other two in Massachusetts you can get. And we've been in U.S. News and World Report a number of times over the last 10 years and Newsweek has carried us as one of the best high schools in the country and we are one of the few to have both international baccalaureate and the AP program going forward. So, I think we have a lot to be proud of at Eastham Elementary and the region schools and thank you for all you're doing to make this thing happen.
Thank you.
With all your support, we wouldn't have it, so, that's our report.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions from anybody? All right.
Even Jerry's giving up.
Yep. She's commenting on you.
I know, I know, but we asked, we had all those written questions.
I know, all right.
Run your bag.
All right, so where were we down here? Down to fee increases under our work session. Public hearing isn't until next Monday.
Right, so, I don't know, this is just a preview for you to, you know, tell me if you have problems with any of them. Lori also handed out the natural resources changes, which, there might be a couple on those you might want to look at. Oh. I did have a question, hold on, where is it? And poor Kim has waited all night to be here in case you have any questions as the Board of Water Commissioners on their changes, but we'd have to convene a short meeting there.
Jamie, question?
Yeah, a couple of quick questions about the transfer station and this is something I've kind of like touched on a few times because I feel like what happens is in the summer, we see a lot of household waste in public places. So, is there any kind of advertising, flyers, something that we can have up near the places where there are garbage cans, like at public beaches, that reflects not only like, not only the fee for dumping, should you get caught, like what the fee is if someone...
Fine, you mean?
Yeah, or fine for someone dumping household waste, but also the options for resident or non-residents and visitors for going to the dump, like have a little plaque that says it's, you know, where, the address of the transfer station and how much it costs for a daily pass.
$10.
Yeah, like just something like that shows the fine and that shows what it costs to just go over and put it where it's supposed to go.
Yeah, maybe we could put it right on the can because I did get, I did get a complaint about sign pollution and they're kind of right. You know, we have a lot of signs and you just can't...
I got you.
But I think maybe right directly on the cans might be the way to do it.
Something, yeah, because I just...
People do send us, they take pictures of people's license plates and send them to the police department.
Yeah.
It's really a good option if you see someone putting household trash in the can because really at least it shames them a little bit.
Yeah, because it's not right.
It isn't, it's...
And it increases pollution at a lot of these sites because you have these overflowing garbage cans that aren't designed to accommodate household waste and then you end up with garbage on the beach and...
And I haven't talked to Sylvia about like some kind of coupon book that people could buy for their renters or whatever, so we might want to talk about that too.
Yeah, we should talk about that, yeah.
All right, anybody have any other questions or anything on any of the fees for docks?
Jamie? Just a couple little things and I don't know if this is the standard and I think this was something we were looking into about having two taxpayer stickers, a resident and a non-resident sticker for the beaches and dumps, something to maybe consider for the future. Or even, the other thing I was thinking about was offering some kind of like discount for year-round residents on some of the rec programs and things like that. Just something, I mean, it's not something, I think that it's really fairly priced right now, but if, you know, one of the things, you know, we've been talking about is offering some kind of incentives to avoid going into a tax, you know, residential tax exemption situation. So, here are places where we could maybe start thinking about some of those things. Maybe there's a 20% reduction in year-round resident cost for certain things on these lists. It's just something to think about.
You mean resident versus taxpayer?
Yes, year-round resident versus taxpayer.
Most of our fees are different. What we don't do that, I think some other towns do, is charge, yeah, they do, I think Wellfleet has a different fee for non-resident taxpayer kids who are using camp and rec services, but that, I don't know what the status of that is, but we can check.
It's just an idea.
We are increasing all of the summer programs to seven weeks this year, which will help out.
Yeah, the rec program's just awesome.
Yeah, and just looking at this though, we say resident and non-resident. We don't say taxpayer.
No.
For recreation, so if they're a non-resident taxpayer, they pay the higher fee?
I don't think so. I think non-resident for this means Turo, Wellfleet, other towns, but I can check.
Yeah, I would think it should be...
It means non-resident, yeah.
Yes, taxpayer versus...
Year-round resident.
I get what you're saying, I don't know.
I mean, the way it's worded, it looks like non-resident taxpayers would pay the higher rate.
That's what I would think, yeah.
Okay, I'll check that.
Would you have a question?
I did.
Okay. Thanks for waiting.
Let's have it.
South dock, that's the commercial docks?
Yes.
Why do we change in that to $65 a foot from flat rate?
Because we're, we've renovated the docks, they now have the same amenities as the other dock and your natural resources department is recommending that they have the same fee. So, it's per foot, not a flat fee.
Can I clarify that? So, does that, does that mean that people who are running commercial fishing programs have to pay the same amount as someone who has a recreational boat?
Sounds the way, it sounds like it.
Yeah, why wouldn't they?
Well, I would...
Traditionally, in every other community, it's not like that. It's either subsidized or...
You have very few commercial boats on the south.
I understand that as well, but...
Okay. I mean, this is your fee, you can decide not to do it. I'm just saying, this is the recommendation of your natural resources.
I'm just trying to get...
We're spending $1.3 million in Rock Harbor and so we're trying to, you know, if the amenities are the same, the whole reason the stick docks were cheaper for years was because they didn't have water, they didn't have electricity, they didn't have the amenities that the other north dock had.
And nothing to do with their commercial status?
Not that I know of, no.
Didn't Shayna say we are redoing though the requirements for...
I'm just curious, across the harbor in Orleans, you get the same amenities, but it's cheaper price if you're commercial.
Okay, how much cheaper? Flat fee or per foot?
No, it's by the foot, but it's substantially cheaper than that.
So, what would you like it to be, Al?
I'd have to look into it more, but it just seems awfully high.
So, let's get that settled before we do a public hearing.
And then the only other question I had is that, I guess...
I think it's a huge change and not, you know, I don't know whether it's the best thing to do, but it would be a huge change going from $250 to over $1,000 a year.
Most of those boats are 32-foot length, so it's looking at like $250 to $2,000.
Well, it's also not just that, but also if someone has a recreational boat, there's a degree of income that they can afford something like that versus someone who's running a commercial fishing program and trying to make a living.
Right.
That to me would be the difference.
Well, and that's what I, one thing I brought up to Shayna when she was at the last meeting with the harbor planning, was those south docks and the commercial...
Those were traditionally, since I was a kid, commercial fishing.
But now they just... You know they're not, Al.
I know they're not, man.
Right.
No, they're not, no, what I'm saying...
But Shayna's talking about redoing that.
Jacky, what I'm trying to tell you is that when I was a kid, when I grew up here, those were primarily commercial boats. Now, they're not.
Yeah.
So, I just don't know what's changed in that regard. The other thing I'd like to mention is that commercial grant holders, in addition to paying their fee, have to get a beach sticker as well to access their grants in the summertime.
That's right.
So, why wouldn't we combine those or change that so they can go to their place of work and not have to get a beach sticker and pay for the permit or, maybe they should be combined or something to think about.
We give them a special price if they're a non-resident, but they have a commercial So, each parking space that someone takes up has a commercial value for us of over $3,000 a year. So, we charge $70 for a commercial, a grant holder to get a parking space for their grant.
If they're out, if they live out of town.
Right.
But if they're in town, they pay the $25.
Right.
Where does it say that on these fees?
That's under beach stickers.
Yeah, it's a beach sticker fee, not a...
Beach parking.
But I think for the, for the... But I think for the, for the dock fees, what I need is a comparable price. So if you want me to check or have Nicole check or the harbor master what Orleans is paying, we can talk about it. Or we can do, you know, half this year and half in two years. But I do think we need to bring them up.
I think we should bring them up, too, but it would, I just think it would be advantageous for us to be comparable to 15 feet across the harbor.
To Orleans, okay. All right, well, we'll check on what Orleans are then.
What's the beneficiary sticker?
That's new.
Yeah, did that have to do with all the trusts?
Exactly. So now we found a way, a sort of way to allow people that have trusts with owners and beneficiaries to get a beneficiary sticker over the two stickers they're allowed, but it's at a different price.
So each one over the two would be 75?
Yep.
Some people have like 20 people.
Exactly.
So get, giving them.
Where's the sticker, I'm still, still not seeing it.
Beneficiary?
So that would, that's the.
People that have trust documents. No, that's not what you're talking about, right?
But they have to be listed as beneficiaries.
That's correct, yeah.
I was looking for the beach fees for non-residents, grant holders.
Well, I don't know if we, we don't have that many, so it might not be listed on our fees.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So if you have a trust.
Yep.
Let's say you and your wife have a trust.
Right.
And you have four beneficiaries.
Right.
So what this says is, I can get $25.
You'd get $75.
For the first two, though, he could get $25.
If they're residents, yes.
First two, $25.
For the trustees, you can pay $25. For the beneficiaries, we will let you get a sticker, which we didn't do last year, but now we're going to charge 75 for that. It's still cheaper than the all-season pass, but it's, I'm, I'm hoping that will mediate the issue of people with 16 beneficiaries.
It's complicated. It's very complicated.
I mean, we really spent a lot of time on this.
Yeah, and, you know, and it is a service that we're providing for people who are non-residents that are visiting here essentially that, you know. So I think it's a fair compromise.
And we, and we do have, as we learned during the, you know, the split tax rate discussion, we have a lot of trusts. So more and more people are putting their homes in trusts, and so this is more of an issue.
All right, so that public hearing is next Monday. So if you have any other concerns, let Jackie know about them before the next meeting. All right? So draft, draft word, review and discussion. So first crack looked great.
I saw one typo.
Yeah, I did, too.
It's super small.
It was in the.
I think it's my, my most comprehensive for draft ever.
Article seven. It was a typo. It was a great, it was a very well done, yeah.
Do we think we can, do you think we need to have another meeting before we go to public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
On the first sentence to see if the town will transfer from P. K. to 1,000, the initial funding of a loan betterment program whose addresses were interested in.
Actually, I think I saw something earlier than that.
Sure you did. We read, we read it 3,000 times and we find.
Oh, yeah, sure, it's sure. We continue to go through it. So we may change, do you want to talk about changing the order?
I think it's a, it's supposed to say deed. It said something else.
What was that, Mark?
Some, I've talked to Lori, tried to locate it. Say "poor" that I saw.
Oh, there was something with deed, yeah.
Yeah.
Might, might have been the high school.
I marked it.
Oh, probably the high school, that's the deed one.
Right.
Yeah, the high school was nice.
It either said dead or.
It was that one.
Instead of deed. I'm not sure where. I'm guessing that must be it.
Yeah, 14. Article 14?
Article 14, is that it?
Deed.
14.
Here it is.
Deep.
Says deep.
Deep.
Instead of deed.
It's in summary.
Oh, it's in summary.
Okay, got it.
It's close. Not dead, but deep.
Yeah, deep is better than dead. Remember when we had frog or something?
So, yeah.
Yeah, you don't have to stay.
You're welcome to adjourn if you care to.
You have down here a dra, a draft warrant review?
That's what we're.
Is that what you're doing now?
Yeah.
Are we able to get?
Should we?
I mean, this is just our first look at it.
Should I adjourn the finance committee?
I think so.
Does that make some sense? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The finance committee is adjourned.
As soon as we get to the second draft, you'll have it.
Oh, okay.
You'll have it for your meeting.
This is our first look at it.
Oh, okay.
They need to decide whether to take things off of it or not.
We are, Jared?
No, no, it's not.
Jerry, we're, we're scheduled to be at this meeting for the fees.
We're scheduled for every Monday night.
For CPA, article.
Leaving next week.
Oh, yeah, it's always a fixed rate.
I don't think they're going to be ready to do that.
That's, yeah.
It's split evenly.
Because I originally had.
Yep, I just wanted to.
Yeah, it's annual every year, whatever we get, we.
So whatever that money in is, it determines the.
March 1st.
When, when the town adopted the CPA, it decided the formula.
So each town has, you know, a formula.
Right, it's split, you believe it's from the three.
Actually, one thing.
By law, it has to be the.
Right. Yeah, you can if you want to.
So one quick thing on the CPA, we were looking at maybe combining them into one article.
With a list.
With a list? Since there isn't anything too hot?
It's what Orleans does, if you've ever seen the Orleans article.
Have we?
Yeah, a couple of years ago, remember, first year Steve responded.
Well, but they were still listed as separate articles. Orleans does it, it's one article.
One article.
And they just list all the different projects. I mean.
It's your call, but I don't know, as a voter, I think I might want to get a way in.
Well, you could.
You could still, just like the budget, right, right. But I think putting them in as one, okay. But I'd like to see them all just as one. There's no eminent domain taken this year. And then Jackie's sort of playing around with the order a little bit.
I am playing around with the order.
I'm fine with that. Let's see what you're looking at there.
Yeah.
All right, any other com, oh, Jamie?
Why the Article 35 CPA historic preservation, that dropped, that like got reduced by half?
Is it?
Well, initially, they were trying to, with the town hall, I believe, was part of it, wasn't it?
Last year it was 30,000.
No, this, it's all new, it's always new.
It's new every year.
Oh, it's new every, depending on the project.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So that's what they asked for, probably, okay. Yeah, some of them are big and some of them are little.
We split up the revenue, Jamie, but they spend it how they feel.
And it can, it can add up, it adds up in their account, they always have one.
Yeah, so historical will have a bigger balance than the other ones because we didn't spend that much from the store.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments on the warrant?
The plastic section one under the Article 41.
Yep.
Checkout bag shall meet carryout bag, remember.
Thank you.
With handles provided by retail establishment. Can we change that and just take out the handles?
With handles, I'm looking.
41. Section one definitions.
It's our, yeah, our plastic, keep going.
Our plastic, keep going. Section one definitions.
Yeah, checkout bag.
Without handles?
No, just say, carryout bag.
By a retail establishment.
Provided by retail establishment. Instead of handles.
We don't want to have the handles.
Because we, I showed her a sample of someone, I went up to the cannabis store in Provincetown, and they got this plastic bag.
And it's like a Ziploc.
Doesn't have handles.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's the standard usually, I think that they.
It's like armor to break into one of those, too.
It's a Ziploc bag.
But it's like a heavy-duty plat, like.
But it's plastic, and so that would.
It's a weird plastic.
Yeah. And they don't all use that.
Okay. All right, if it was a non-plastic version of it.
Okay. Got it.
All right.
Lori, you're going to have to help me find all these. I got that one.
Whatever.
All right, so town administrators' report.
Oh, my gosh, do you think anyone's still listening?
No.
It's, we're not live, so it's being recorded.
Nobody's listening.
Nobody's listening.
Peter's listening. And Kim.
It was the cookies.
Thank you, Peter.
And Ed, we lost.
I, I only have one thing, poor Kim's still waiting, yeah. She's waited this whole frigging meeting, and we just skipped over her. But the only thing I wanted to let you know is I had a meeting today with Kent EMS Fire Chief and Jane, our health agent, regarding a plan for, you know, preparing the town for the coronavirus. And basically Jane is on the phone with the CDC. Pretty much they have weekly updates and more frequently if needed because it's part of the emergency management plan. She and Kent are going to put together something for us in, because I know that, you know, Jamie had sent me a tiny, few-minute thing from the CDC that was excellent. So basically, I think a lot of people are, Jane was saying, are kind of hung up on the mask idea. The mask is, is really not going to help you. There are very few masks that really have the side compartments and are fitted to your face well enough to do it. So mask wearing isn't necessarily helpful at all. I did read one article, though, that sometimes people wear masks because it helps them stop touching their face. So if, if it does that, then that's helpful, but it's certainly not going to do much else. But hand washing, we have also, for the town, we've distributed bleach wipes and Purell alcohol-based antiseptic to every town department. We're wiping down things like handles on doors, fixtures, bathrooms every day, just to kind of knock the virus back. Everybody, so each department has assigned a person, and then our cleaning staff does it every night.
So the library would have to assign a person?
Well, I would think it would just be common sense. So I have them even in my office, and I do my doors, and you can just, if you think about it, just a couple of times a day, or if a few people think about it a couple of times a day, in a building like this, if you have every librarian do one, you know, couple of doors, it'll work. Yeah, but it's really easy to use the wipes and just wipe them down. And if you have them next to the computers or next to everything, that's when people will grab them and do, and they'll do it themselves, you know?
You know, one benefit from a lot of this is the flu rates are going to go way down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, most of this is just stuff you should be doing outside of the.
Anyway, exactly. And I, it's funny because.
Record there, just keep clean.
Coming from a COA background, during flu season, we do that routinely at senior centers anyway. So any public buildings should be kind of routinely doing that in the winter when we're all closed up together, you know?
And we're fortunate, on our Board of Health, Joanna Buffington used to work for the CDC.
Exactly, so. But, but Jane really is, the website is also very informative if you want to read up on it. And I do think that people need to take precautions, but stay as calm as possible.
Keep calm and wash your hands.
Yeah.
All right, any other business?
New, I make a motion to adjourn to Board of Water Commissioners.
Not to return.
Not to return to Board of Selectors.
Ever!
Ever, yeah.
All in favor?
Come on up, Kim.
Aye.
All right. Okay, we are now Board of Water Commissioners. Al, it's your show.
Send it, Kim.
Yeah, there you go.
Fire away.
I'm recommending implementing new fees to our water.
I don't think that's, that's not on.
Here, just, you can just use this.
Yeah, come on up here.
Kim, you can literally just pull the chair up right there.
Take Jivana's microphone.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there is great.
She probably wanted to stand, though, after three hours of sitting.
I would like to change the water fees to read per quarter rather than yearly because we bill quarterly. Number two, a backflow prevention device is installed in order to protect the municipal water system from possible contamination caused by the backflow of water from the customer's plumbing system back into the municipal water system. A backflow device is typically needed at a commercial properties where the possibility of contaminants is greater as determined by the system operator. The device needs to be inspected upon installation and subsequently inspected once a year by certified personnel. Our system operator, Whitewater, performs the inspection service for us within their contract. I'm recommending a fee of $75 be implemented, as is typical of other surrounding towns. We would like to implement a fee for customers wanting to connect their fire suppression system to the municipal water system, but choose not to connect to their domestic service. A business slash residence that only hooks up their fire suppression to town water and kept their domestic on a well would pay $250 per quarter. If at any time the customer chooses to connect their domestic water service to municipal water system, they would no longer, no longer be subject to this fee.
Can I interrupt? One sec. So we would not charge you if you were a business that's connected to the domestic supply and fire suppression. But we have two businesses now that are connected to fire suppression and getting all the benefits of that with no fees at all. No fees for water usage, no fees for the connection. So we need to fix that, so.
It's leverage, too, to get them.
Muscle there, I like it.
There you go.
Okay, next.
So we would change the regulations under other terms to say, from fire service without domestic is not permissible, to fire service without domestic is subject to a fee. As zoning changes occur and properties become developed over time, there is a possibility that a new service line or water main would be needed to adequately serve their needs. In this case, the town would grant permission for a licensed contractor to tap the existing water mains and install a new service line. The recommended fees reflect fees seen in nearby towns. Water use set up at the DPW. We are in the process of building a fill station at the DPW for commercial trucks to purchase water. We would charge $50 per company per year to use the fill station and then current maximum rate, which is $7.50 per 1,000 gallons.
Wonderful job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we need a motion on this?
Yep.
Well, no, the, well, the public hearings.
Next week.
So we need to know if you have a problem.
Do you have any problems with any of these?
No, I think a lot of them.
Yeah, is this public, is, public hearing is, what, March 9th?
Yeah, it's a week from today.